Hi, everybody, and welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals hearing for April 16, 2019. We have an early start this evening due to a full agenda, 7:00 PM. Army Chairman Pachy Moberhill, and I'm going to recuse myself and pass the gavel to Chairman Riley for the case, the continued case at 1369 Boston Providence Turnpike, the Sky Restaurant conversion into condominiums. Then we have four, we have five other hearings after that, 7:10 is 347 Everett Street is an open lot, open storage request for the old Holtman property, 69 Boston Providence Highway is assigned, 500 Boston Providence Highway is assigned, 111 Lennox Street is parking, and 61 Endicott Street down at the old Zimbalz is a salon request to be put in there. So, without any further ado, can we get the gavel? No problem. So, I'll pass the gavel over to Mr. Riley. There is no gavel.
You can pass me the bottle of water if you want.
Good luck.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're here for the, as the chairman has indicated, the continued hearing on a case involving 1369 Boston Providence Turnpike. The last hearing was continued in significant measure on the basis that we wanted to have some further investigation regarding the, an agreement that apparently was made in reference to an earlier hearing in 1994, which was referenced in a letter that we received from Attorney Mackey. At the prior hearing, as I recollect, Attorney Hillyard indicated, as is correct, that the project was never constructed pursuant to the '94 decision, and indeed, a new application and new decision was, occurred in 1996. In the interim, I undertook to look at the '96 files specifically to the minutes of the meeting and any other matters that might have been in the file, and I did not find therein any specific reference to the agreement referenced by Attorney Mackey. However, we have now received, frankly, rather unfortunately, since there's very little time to look at it, I mean, I'm, because of what I did for a living, I'm accustomed to looking at things on short notice that pop up, but this could be a little bit much. There is a letter that I last saw about two and a half minutes ago, I guess, from the office of Mackey and Mackey, which references not only the material that we're, of which we're aware with regard to the, to the two decisions, but also makes reference to a deed restriction that the letter claims has been recorded in the Norfolk Registry of Deeds. It cites Section 16, 443, page 001, and quotes thereupon, according to the letter, the following language. "Said premises are conveyed, together with the benefit of and subject to, the provisions of the decisions of the Norwood Zoning Board of Appeals, recorded in Book 10757, page 247", which it describes as being the 1994 decision, and Book 1157, page 535, the '96 decision. And the allegation that thereupon follows in the letter is as follows, and I'm quoting. "Accordingly, the current owner, SNC Realty Trust, took ownership of the land, subject to the conditions in both documents, without any reservations or caveats about the 1994 decision. As such, by the clear language of the deed, the land is subject to the condition of both decisions, which include," and they quote from both cases apparently. First quote is, "All access and egress shall be from Route 1, and the driveway from Sumner Street will be eliminated with the area blocked off." Now, they're describing that as condition one in Case 9447. Now, I don't recall that being a condition as such in the decision.
No such condition.
I think that there was some language in the '94 decision that made reference to the non-use of that exit, but I don't recall it as being a specific condition in the decision. The second quotation that is included in the letter is, "The property presently has a driveway open to Sumner Street, which will be closed off, and the aerial landscape with posts installed to stop access." Page 2, Paragraph 4, Case 9631. That may well be true, because there was some reference to it in the decision.
Discussion.
Yeah, there was some reference to it. But I would question, I see that Mr. Hillyard may have it in hand.
This is '94, those are the conditions.
Thank you, sir. I'll take just a look at it, if I may. The letter refers directly to what it describes as condition one in that letter, and condition one, and I'll read it verbatim from the 1994 decision, says, "The plan of record is entitled," let me make sure that we're reading correctly, yes, "The plan of record is entitled, quote, occasions banquet facility site plan in Norwood, Mass., scale 1 to 40, dated July 20, 1994, by Norwood Engineering Co., Inc., 1410 Route 1, Norwood, Mass., 02062." I don't read that as the letter does, there certainly does not appear to be in that condition the language that is recited in the letter. I don't know whether somehow or other, there's some attempt to claim that the, that the plan supersedes that, but there certainly is no such language as the letter purports to indicate as being present in the, in the decision. I'm looking now at the case number 9631, and there are, in that case, the general usual seven conditions, they appear to be similar to the general ones that we have, but the first one speaks about additional fencing being added to the rear of the Franklin property at 118 Sumner Street to the property line of the St. Seer Island, and from the benchmark at the end of the line, so described, will be added in a northerly direction along the rear property line of 102 Sumner Street to aid in the screening of the parking area from residential land. Well, that sounds to me, as I read it, as a, probably a, an appropriate condition, which would certainly tend to ameliorate the effect of the parking area, but I don't see that it has any specific reference to the access out to Sumner Street. The remaining conditions, number two references the plan, number three references a revised plan. Condition four is a completion date. Five requires the usual provision with respect to compliance with state and local permits. Six is the traditional good housekeeping condition, and finally, the frequent condition of reservation of a right to amend. So, I think that the situation, as we described it previously, thank you, is as we believed it to be, and that is that there are no specific conditions in either the '94 decision or the '96 decision that either make that, either of those decisions dependent upon any of the conditions, nor any indication that the conditions would progress forward ad infinitum. Now, unfortunately, given the short time that we have here, it may be that we're going to need a little more time to attempt to go through all of this, I don't know, let's see how things develop. There's more to this, going on, talking about the interrelation of the special permits, and on, about the variance requiring merits, and conclusions of what area, and so forth, and so on. And then there appear to be various exhibits here, if we can take a quick look at them. The first exhibit, first exhibit is illegible, which is a bit of a problem. The second exhibit is a, bears the stationery of, of Mr. Mackey, and, let's see, it appears to reference the October 1994 letter, which we're familiar. There is also a letter from Diane Garrity to Mr. Mackey. It indicates that Ms. Garrity, at the time, had discussed the matter regarding the portion of the property abutting from the street, and indicates that the, this is, again, this is a '94 letter, bear in mind, and it suggests that the portion of the premises will not be used as an entrance. We will be leaving this portion in the natural state. I believe this is a letter that we have seen before at some time, and it says that it will not, the driveway will not be connected to anything, it will not be used. It said, "I wanted to confirm that the fire department has not submitted any comments to the zoning board regarding this project, so it appears they will not be requiring this portion of the lot to be used as a fire entrance." There is, appears to be another letter, again, from Ms. Garrity, referring to no traffic entering Sumner Street. Again, it's a 1994 letter, a reference presumably to that case. There then follows a, as Exhibit B, a quitclaim deed from Steve Theo Durocas and Eugene Catarina to CAT Realty. Now, I'm looking through it as quickly as possible, it has the usual language with respect to conveyances that one would expect to see. Let's see what else there may be here. My apologies, I normally would prefer to have a more even and smooth presentation going on, but we're attempting to review some things that we have simply not seen before. Exhibit A describes the various parcels involved in a transaction, and I'm trying to see, there are some conditions with respect to the conveyance, I'm trying to, here is a, here is what they appear to be talking about. There are two conditions at the bottom of the, well, the pages are not numbered, it's Exhibit A, Parcel 4, and at the very bottom, it indicates in two different paragraphs. First of all, it says, "The premises are conveyed," well, I'm sorry, this is, again, my apologies, we're reading this very quickly. The first one is a conveyance subject to a taking by the town of Norwood, but there then is, at the very bottom, a provision that the premises are conveyed, together with the benefit of and subject to the provisions of the decisions of the Norwood Zoning Board of Appeals, recorded in Book 10757, page 247, and Book 11557, page 535, which without referring back to the specific numbers, I assume refer to the '94 and the '96 decisions. There is an Exhibit C, which appears to be, appear to be the 1994, copy of the 1994 decision, signed by Mr. Randall, and there then follows what appears to be the 1996 decision, which was signed by me. Then there is a copy of the petition, signed from Mr. Corcoran, for a special permit. That's actually a decision in 0319, this is a decision that was signed by Mr. Moberhill. And let's see what we finally have here. That appears to be the end of the, the end of the presentation. Much as I, in the course of hearings like this, don't like to make what appear to be snap comments or unresearched decisions, I don't see too much in this package that particularly changes where we were. Again, do not appear to be any specific conditions in either of the decisions. I don't know, have you seen this document, Mr.?
I haven't, but everything you've referenced, I've seen.
Yeah, I, if you, and I assume the deed as well, there is, the only thing that is new to me in the document that we did not see previously in the file would be the deed that does seem to reference the decisions. It strikes me, without actually doing any research on it, that that tends to line up with the comments that I think Mr. Hillyard made at the earlier hearing, that this is largely a matter that revolves around contractual agreements between the parties, and I'm not sure that it, that it specifically and directly impacts what this board is doing. That would be my summary at the moment. I don't know if anybody else has had an opportunity to wheel through this thing or not, or whether he wanted to offer any comments, Mr. Hillyard, but that's what I see of it, and I apologize if I have any, made any omissions or mistakes in hastily going through it, but that's what I see of it.
I think, as we've said, well, first off, this is our fourth time here.
Yes, it is.
And the opportunity to have presented whatever evidence the opposition wants to present has taken place over eight weeks, and I think whatever, the evidence, the documents that have been presented, I've responded to. I see only two ways that would have actually affected my client. One would be a deed restriction, recorded deed restriction, that affected this land, and the second would be a Board of Appeal decision that specifically, as a condition, made reference to the use of the site.
Yes.
The third issue, which I think, and I ask you to please consider, this is a new request, this has nothing to do with coming in and going out because there is a banquet facility, or a restaurant, or anything else. This is entrance and exit, basically, for 39 one and two bedroom condominiums.
Yep.
That will be regulated by an electric gate, so that people can't just use it when they desire, they want to come in from some other back way. That, as I think, is what the board is asked to consider, not whatever comments had been made in the past. That's my opinion only, and that's what I'm asking you to consider. I think we've made our case, we've put in all the evidence we could possibly put in for the special permits, for the variances, so on and so forth, and I would ask that we have no further delays and just go forward with however that's going to go.
I have one question that is actually unrelated to this specific document and the allegations that it contains, and that would have to do with guests who came to visit the tenants in the condominium. I assume they would enter an exit via Route 1.
What would happen, what usually happens in cases like this, is a code, you pull up to, it's like you do any, a lot of places in parking lot, and there's a code, it's like a dial on a telephone, and you have a code that is usually changed, weekly, monthly, however you do it. And if you're having a guest come, you say one of two things. One, here's the code, punch it in, the gate goes up, or two, here's my personal code, push that, you will call me in my unit, I will push a button, and the gate will go up. If there's no one home, there's no one home. That's how it works, as far as when guests come in.
What about, what about a restriction of having the guest enter via Route 1?
Well, they could enter via, enter.
Somebody in terms of, you know, would your client be willing to make some sort of effort to communicate to people who became tenants in the facility to encourage their guests to enter via Route 1, as opposed, I assume, actually, in most cases, it might be more convenient, because I assume a lot of people would arrive via Route 1, and
It's, it's an interesting layout.
There's the entrance.
People are going to do.
Why go around the corner?
They're going to do what's convenient to them.
Sounds like Route 1 to me.
Right-hand turns are the safest and most convenient things to make.
Exactly.
On the roads. It's easier to make a right-hand turn, they're going to make that right-hand turn. They have the choice on Route 1. You don't have a choice on the back, because it's only going to be allowed by people who live there.
Yep.
And will people who have a guest, here's my code, or you can punch it in. I happen to live in a community that does that exactly this way.
Yeah, yeah.
And it, it, fine, works fine, we, somebody pulls in, doesn't have the code, and so on and so forth, they back out, or they call someone, and we let them in, and they turn around and leave.
Yes, yeah. Or, in this case, they could simply exit by, I suppose it might depend where you're going.
That's right, it all depends on where you're going.
If you're going south, you're probably just exit by Route 1, because it's easier to do that, but.
Right, exactly.
Going north, why, I suppose, that could be, that could be different. All right, any, first of all, let me just inquire if there's any other comments from the board, and again, I am sorry that this is such a short notice of handing you something as the hearing is underway, but I still would think that, you know, if anybody wishes to comment about the letter, or has any questions regarding the letter for the applicant, or wants to bring up anything for the board, we could, would do that, but I've done the best I can to try to summarize it on short notice, but any comments or questions from anybody even Paul?
Yeah, I understand, I wish we got the letter earlier.
So do I, I mean, it would be much, would obviously be.
We have to take what we have in front of us.
Obviously, it'd be much easier to deal with it earlier.
I just want to ask, you know, I don't even know if it's appropriate, if, I assume the resident that hired Mr. Mackey is present tonight, is that right?
Yes.
Are we allowed to inquire further at this point, or no?
Well, I think what we would do in that regard is that, obviously, I'm going to, at some point, and maybe this would be the appropriate time, to inquire if anybody from the audience has any comment, and if the individual on whose behalf the letter was sent wishes to make any comment, or they'd be certainly free to do so. Would you care to make any comment with regard to the letter?
Yes, I'm William Vale.
Yes, Mr. Vale, yes.
I'm the, I'm the person who hired Attorney Mackey.
Yes, indeed.
To investigate the information.
Yes, yes.
I'm in a kind of a lost word here, because Attorney Mackey's letter here that I've read, read, several others had, clearly states that that egress onto Sumner Street is included in the court decision. It's, you, you recited court documentation decisions in the letter.
Just to clarify, by a court decision, may I clarify one thing, sir? But by a court decision, you mean our decision?
It's recorded.
There is no court decision that I'm aware of in this case. You mean our, you mean our, our decision?
Your decision, the board's decision was recorded in.
We, we like to think of ourselves as a court, but we're really not.
No, 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 it was recorded.
Just to clarify, there's no, there's no actual superior or other court decision.
I know, I know it's not a court.
You're talking about our decision, okay. Go ahead.
It was recorded in.
Go ahead.
The Record of Deeds.
Yes, yes.
And he cites the case number in his documentation that you have before you.
Our case, yeah.
Your case number, that says that it was recorded in that. In order to refute that, you would have to have that information in front of you to say that it is actually not recorded in that, and you do not have that documentation here before you, you have Mr. Mackey's assertion that it is recorded, but you don't have that information in front of you to say that it was not recorded.
Well, I'm not sure that it, Jim, go ahead, I'm not sure it matters particularly, but go ahead, just.
Well, it doesn't matter, because it may not under some.
Hang on one second, I mean, the recording, hang on just a minute.
We're talking about a matter of law, we're not talking a matter of opinion. Mr. Mackey is a very good lawyer.
Yes, he is.
Doesn't make the law.
No, he doesn't.
He can opine on the law, and he can give us copies of the law.
Yep.
But his statements are not the law.
No, no, no.
There is nothing recorded at the Registry of Deeds, whether it be a deed, or whether it be a decision of this board, that restricts the use of that roadway from Sumner Inn. Nothing restricts it. There's discussion in, in the decision that you have about it, but the, but what, the effect of your decision is what restrictions you put on as a condition of approval.
Right.
There's nothing at all like that. The butter is trying to take some words and say, "This is the law."
Right.
It isn't the law. That's the bottom line.
Yeah, I, I think that what, what is going on here is, I do think that this primarily, the deed restriction would be something that primarily relates to relationships between the applicant before us and then the other parties to the, to that decision, and whether or not they can do it without becoming involved in a dispute with those people is a matter that may be beyond the concerns and jurisdiction of this body. I mean, I think what we're being asked to do is to make a determination as to whether or not we will permit the, the, the principal thing we're being asked to do, as to whether or not we will permit the applicant to include the square footage in the residential area in computing the acreage on the property and the, on the issue of compliance with Section 421, I think it is, of the bylaw, with respect to the total area that's necessary in order to substantiate the number of units that they have. It seems to me that beyond that, it becomes a matter between the parties as to, as to whether or not, I think that Mr. Hillyard may have commented before, that if there, if there's some kind of prohibition between the parties, then maybe they can't do it. But I'm not sure that it's something that this board, I assume, if totally, if for some reason, totally apart from whatever the law may be on this issue, if this board felt that it was appropriate to add some condition with respect to egress onto the, I suppose we could do that, but I don't think this, from what I see thus far, I don't see anything in the law that would compel us to do that.
Can I speak to your comment?
Sure, of course, of course.
Exactly in that point, Mr. Riley?
Of course, sure.
Setting aside the driveway easement, even though we don't want it.
Yep.
I would like to know why it is that the board is addressing a change to the requirements for zoning when there's no hardship here. There's no hardship or actual need for Sky Restaurant to petition the board for more than the 11 units specified by the law. There's no need, there's, they're not suffering any kind of harm by, by condition of, of restriction of the land, they're not suffering any harm by easements, none of that is applying. What they're asking for is a pure, purely a gift of 39 units instead of what's allowed by law, the 11. There's no need for the board to allow 39 units, it would be, it would be the board giving a gift of 3.5 times the number of units, allowed by law according to the way, the way the law. Allowed by law according to the way, the way the law is written and according to my understanding, if you combine, if you don't combine the two and you leave them, it's 11 unit maximum. If the board designs to allow them to combine the unit, where's the hardship? There's no hardship here for them to build 11 units. They have a restaurant on the property, they can build 11 units on the property, they don't need 39 units, 3.5 times the number. There's no need for the board to allow 3.5 times the number.
Sir, you've made reference to a hardship. Hardship requirements pertain to variances. The particular relief, let me finish. The particular relief which they are seeking as it relates to the number of units on site is not a variance but a special permit that they be permitted to have multifamily use in a highway business zone. A special permit does not require that the board address any issues of hardship. The only issue, the only request for variance is the second request, which is apart from the major issue that's been involved in this case. And that is to allow a maximum floor area ratio in excess of the required 0.5 pursuant to Section 411. That is a variance, but that is not related to the principal issue in this case that you're concerned with with respect to access out to Sumner or to the number of units that may be permitted to exist within the condominium. That has only to do with the special permit and that does not involve issues of hardship.
Can I just?
Mr. Easie, please.
Mr. Vale, just to correct, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong. I thought you supported the project. You had no problem with the project, I thought you said at one hearing.
You're exactly right, I did.
Okay, but you have a problem with going out to Sumner Street? Is that correct?
Yes, I have, I have a major issue with opening up that closed off egress that was closed off via two separate documents that are recorded.
Right, so you have no problem with the 39 luxury condominium?
Well, I'll tell you something, I'll tell you something. If you're gonna put a driveway in right there, then I got a problem with the whole thing.
No, no, I'm not talking about.
Sitting here does too.
I'm not, I'm not talking about the driveway. I just wanna know with the, with the 7,000 square foot restaurant for 200 seats and the 39 condominiums, you don't have a problem, a problem with that, with that concept? The problem you have is opening up to Sumner Street?
Yes.
Okay, I just, I need, I wanted an answer because I was a little bit confused.
Clarification is the egress to Sumner Street, that's the biggest thing.
All right, let me just make another comment.
Sure, go ahead, Paul.
If you look at Mr. Mackey's letter, it says, it goes on to say, the last paragraph, that the Vales, which is this gentleman here, and it's his perfect legal right to be here and speak the way he wants.
Of course, of course he does.
And he's here protecting his neighborhood. He's saying that they're asking us, they're asking this board to deny the variance or at a minimum, at a bare minimum, try to honor any conditions or any discussions that we had in the past and not allow access onto Sumner Street. So I asked this at the beginning of the, of the hearing, and I'm gonna ask this again. When I see a letter coming like this from, you know, a seasoned attorney and he's talking about how stringent it is to meet the criteria of a variance, is there any way you could consider not going out onto Sumner Street so that this project could move forward?
No. That's why we have, to answer your question, that's why we have gone to great lengths to put this road in a way where we have fencing, we have shrubbery, we are controlling the cars that coming in and out, so there's nothing coming in and out of a car that doesn't live there, maybe a guest or two, whatever that's going to be. But it's not a roadway that's going to open either way. The interesting thing is, as the gentleman said, if we just put 11 units in, we still would have that driveway and would want that driveway.
Would you oppose to have restricted hours on the gate? I mean, I think.
The answer is, the answer is yes, and I'll tell you why. People don't live by restricted hours. I mean, a snowstorm, people coming home from work and they want, that's how they would ordinarily get in. I don't think you say to these folks, well, you better go down Route 1 some other way and to get home. It's confusing at best and.
Can I, I'll, I'll jump in. I've made many concessions regarding this driveway. Residents only, fence, screening, all those things, which, which I get it, I'm fully prepared to do. If limiting the time helps move this along and gets us to a decision point, I'm willing to do that. And what I'm, what I'm willing to do.
Don't do that. I'm just, I think.
Well, what I'm trying, what I'm trying to do, I'm trying, I think, honestly, I think it's a good project. I think we need housing in Norwood. I have no problem, you've got over three acres of land there.
Right.
You know, the tax base to the town is great. I understand where the neighbors are coming from, you know what I mean? I wanna give them as much protection as we can. And if that's gonna really help this, move this along and you restrict the hours so that people can't go out after, after 1:00 in the morning on a Friday or a Saturday, Friday or Saturday night, I think that's gonna help tremendously because there's not gonna be any traffic going in and out of Sumner Street when the Sky Restaurant is in full effect.
Doing and proposing what we have proposed on an entry and an exit from this facility, to tell the people who are gonna spend this amount of money that it, between 11:00 PM, 7:00 AM, or whatever it's going to be, you cannot use that road that leads into or out of, what are they going to do? They're gonna all come in and go out Route 1?
I'm just talking about on a Friday or a Saturday night when the bar closes.
But the bar, but the bar, no one from the bar is going out that way.
Bar people can't use it. They can't, that's the gate.
They can't get out.
You can't get out unless you have the same code that you would have to get in. So it's not a matter of any bar people going out or coming in unless those bar people happen to be living there at the same time.
No, I understand, I understand, there's gotta be some way that it could be restricted just to give the neighbors.
It is restricted.
To the residents.
It's restricted to the people who are going to live there. And no one else.
Who will be spending a lot of money to live there?
No, I understand that.
Just like the other folks that are there now on Sumner. These folks have every right to use their residential property in the same fashion. So that's, you know, that's.
Right. I, I pretty much said what I feel like I needed to say, but I'm, I'm just saying that if you read Mr. Mackey's letter and he's talking about a variance, you know, it could be appealed. I mean, this thing could be tied up for two or three years. If we can resolve it now and try to reach that happy medium, then everybody wins here.
Well, the only thing, and again, I need to comment, the variance does not relate to the principal issue in this case.
No, it doesn't.
The variance relates only to this maximum law, lot ratio, whatever, that, I'm not even sure I know what it means, and I hope before I retire that maybe I'll figure out what it is.
Matt's still here.
Matt, I think Matt understood what it was, I think we can get Matt. But, no, the main issue with respect to the exit onto Sumner Street and the number of units that will appear and will be constructed, that all relates to a special permit. It's got nothing to do with a variance. It has nothing to do with a hardship. It has simply to do with whether or not we are willing to grant a special permit to permit the use of the parking lot area beyond the zoning line in the residential area to be computed as part of the area of the lot to justify the number of units in the, in the condo. And it does if you, if you allow that. Anything else from the board? Mrs. Anderson?
I just have one question. I spent about two hours over there today with the surveyors and so forth. Now, we're talking about this road. Now, where the cutout is, if I'm coming in from Sumner Street, is it considered the first cutout to, and then 24 feet this way? So in other words, what's, the people already.
With the curb cut?
Yeah. So what the people have already landscaped, it would be fine with me if you're putting up a very nice fence and so forth. So you're really, you're not going onto their property.
No.
So they, he, the landscaper showed me today the blocks. So it looks to me from that curb cut right there.
We're actually giving them land because the fence is going to be in our spot and they're gonna have extra land on the other side.
Okay, that, that's my, my question, and that's what I thought. So I don't have any objection to that. And the second thing, in considering the parking for both, how are you gonna delineate between what the restaurant can use and what the condo people are allowed? Now, you're gonna, I think you're gonna number the condos, what's available to them.
There will be some designated parking place, are you talking about?
Right.
Okay.
All right, but so now somebody comes into our restaurant, he sees the number, they park there anyway. Is there gonna be some kind of a delineation so that they can't?
Let me first explain something that is important. There are required parking spaces, numbers for the restaurant, and there are required numbers for the condominiums.
I think that's what they're getting at.
And we have, cumulatively, we have a total of equal if not more.
Right.
Now, the question then is, are they gonna be numbered as, I live in unit five?
No, no, I just mean, is there any reason that it, somebody, you have an overflow of people? One family brings five cars for one table. Are they going to be able to go into the condo's parking? Or is there gonna be some line of delineation where they can't? It's just, I was just.
Is this, is this something that might arise at the site plan, designating certain areas?
What's gonna happen is, people are gonna be assigned a spot, it's gonna be part of a deed at.
I totally understand that.
It's gonna have either a name or it's gonna say, and that's where they're gonna park. Now, somebody comes into the restaurant and says, I think I'll park there, that probably won't happen more than once because someone's going into the restaurant and saying, whoever is parking in number five is about to be towed. That's usually what happens if you're living in a, it gets so territorial when you live in a condominium.
No, I understand everything you're saying. I'm only asking, is there any, gonna be any wall delineation or anything that they can't do it?
Well, I don't think there's gonna be a fenced area where you, where only the owners can get in and out.
This is my question.
Because then we're blocking them from getting out Route 1 or coming in from Route 1.
Well, all right, I looked at it differently today, I looked over this with you. But you answered my question.
Okay.
No, it's okay.
Anything else from the board? Mr. Brady?
If I can, unless you've got something.
No, I just wanna continue where Mary was.
Well, all right, if it's a continuation, we'll go to that now.
Well, it was presented, I think at the last time you were here, that it's gonna be with, done with a remote anyway. So if somebody parks in the lot, they're not gonna be able to get onto the driveway that goes out to Sumner Street.
Well, specifically, we said the gate, the gate blocked the driveway.
Oh, I understand that. I had no problem with that. I just meant generally, just the whole area that's not gated. Oh, I know that, I totally understand that.
Yeah, okay.
Now then, Tom.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry, buddy.
No, no, it's all right, it's all right.
He claimed it was following up on something else, so I figured I'd give him a little leeway.
I respect it.
That was very kind to you, Phil. That was very kind to you.
Well, I try to be, I try to be kind, you know that. I'm not sure he agrees with that, but go ahead, Tom.
As far as I'm concerned, you're all kind.
Tom knows.
All right, with all due respect to everybody's opinion, okay? Everybody, everything I thought, your compromise was, was very nice, very decent. I said it last time, as much as we have to be fair to the residents, we have to be fair to the applicants, I personally disagree with that in regards to being fair to the applicant to block it, especially in terms of selling a place, hey, sorry, but you can't use this. Here's the bottom line, okay? As far as I'm concerned, everything we've seen so far that I know of in the Mackey letter, that I've heard in the past three hearings, from everybody on all sides, it all resorts back to a function facility and a restaurant, has nothing to do with the residential area. And at this time, if it's all right with the chair, I'd like to propose a motion to close the hearing.
Before we do that, let me just make one last inquiry as to whether anyone from the audience has anything further that they would like to say. Or have we heard, it sounds to me as though we've heard most of what we need to hear, but if there's something that we, and incidentally, I would ask if you did have something further to say, that you make as certain as possible that it's something we haven't heard before. I don't, I don't see anything. All right, in that event, Mr. Brady has submitted a motion to close the hearing. Is that motion seconded?
I would second that motion.
Seconded by Jack Perry. All those in favor of closing the hearing at this time indicate by a res, an eye, so that would be five to nothing. What is the pleasure of the board with respect to the hearing? My feeling about it, you know, in the course of this hearing, I did express some reservations that arose in some measure because I chanced to be the person who signed the 96 decision so that I felt as though I had incurred some sort of, not an obligation, but a personal decision to do this in an effort to protect the residents. Upon further consideration of everything, it seems to me that that still pertains, that we are still protecting the residents as we did then because we are still restricting the access, in fact, preventing the access from any of the, any of the resident, any of the people coming to utilize the restaurant. We're talking as, Mr. Hillyard has emphasized about a special unlimited group of people who will be living in the condominium and whose access will be controlled such that others will not be permitted or will not be able to, to exercise it. All of those things being true, it seems to me that the benefits involved here outweigh any, any adverse effects, and I would be prepared to proceed ahead and vote in favor of the permit and, and of the variance. Any other comments from members of the board?
Well, I have a couple of comments.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Easie.
First of all, I'll ask my colleagues again, am I the only one that feels that you don't wanna restrict the hours of the gate? Everybody, you feel it's.
I live in a situation like that in the summer where we are, and it, there would be an uproar if we didn't.
Okay, so you're saying, so, and the applicant is telling us that the people that are in the 200-seat restaurant, they're not gonna access out Sumner Street?
Can't.
No.
Okay, so I'll leave that alone. I'm comfortable with that. Now, we talked about this plan here, and I had asked earlier on the landscaping, because if you look to the right and left of that, there are two beautiful homes. I mean, I know the applicant, I mean, the abutts are here. I'd like to see a minimum of six-foot shrubs, like 15, 15 on center, if I could go straight down that whole row, to give them that extra privacy. Are you amenable to that?
That's your discretion.
Well, I would make a condition.
In addition to the eight-foot wall, he's already.
Well, I mean, he's, he's going to put the fencing up and he's already agreed to do some shrubbery, so why can't we just?
I don't have a problem with that, I'm just saying, so the shrubbery's going on the inside of the wall or the outside of the wall?
Well, it's gonna grow beyond, above and beyond the fence, and I only think it's gonna, it's only gonna give it, the neighbors the privacy I think they, they deserve, you know?
I agree.
I think as Mr. Hillyard was about to suggest, the, the answer to that is that the, the board is empowered to impose reasonable conditions, and if we conclude that that's a reasonable condition, then that can be included as part of the decision. So that can, I think the short answer to your question is, yes.
Okay, so. It was proposed last time.
That can be done.
I feel, I feel that the 39 luxury condominiums, because they're not apartments, the condominiums is a need in the town, there's a big need for housing. So I think that's a plus. I think, I think that the tax base to the town is gonna bring in another $100,000 every year in real estate taxes. I also feel that, that they're not gonna have the traffic. I mean, with no disrespect to any of the abutts, but I don't see the same amount of traffic going in and out of here like you see at Wendy's at the Stop and Shop. So, I mean, if I get those conditions, I'm gonna support it.
No longer at the Stop and Shop.
Right, well, that's true.
Well, may I say.
I would see, I would see no, no problem with we adding those conditions.
Temporarily.
They seem reasonable to me.
But if the fence is high enough and the shrubbery's high enough, they're really not gonna see that traffic.
Not that much, I guess I'd say.
Because I'm satisfied, and I was concerned before, of how close you were gonna be to the driveway. Well, they have a whole area where they already have grass and they're planting, so you said it's gonna be on the other side of that. So if the trees are high enough, most trucks, and trucks are not going in that route, I don't see how they'll even see that.
They won't.
Anything from, Mr. Perry, Mr. Brady, any comments?
I'll do, one, one last comment.
One last comment.
I will, with all due respect to. I will, with all due respect to the neighbors, again, I respect your position, okay? But I believe the compromise has been met. I believe that's the function of the board, is to come to a compromise when there's a arguable issue on the table. And if no one else has anything to say about it, Jack, I'll even go as forward to make a motion to approve the, the request.
I think we should do it in two, in two separate motions because there are two separate requests for relief.
There are three, actually.
Are there three? I'm sorry, did I miss? I was looking only at the, at quick glance at the permit and the variance.
The split lot provision, according to Town Council, implies a variance.
All right, I, I, all right. But let's begin first then with the request for a special permit under section three-one-five-five of the zoning bylaw to allow multifamily use in a highway business district. I'll, I'll take your initial motion, Mr. Brady, to refer to that special permit. Is that motion seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded by Jack. All those in favor of granting the request for the special permit indicated by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Secondly, with respect to the variance, there are two matters to be dealt with rather than the one that I quickly thought just glancing at the application showing what appeared at first, first looked to be one of each, but indeed there are two. The first variance request is to allow a maximum floor area ratio in excess of the required zero-point-five pursuant to section four-one-one. I'll look for a motion to grant that variance.
Motion approved again.
Motion is made by Mr. Brady, seconded by Mr. Perry. All those in favor of granting that variance request indicated by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye, five to nothing. And finally, a request, another variance request, to allow the inclusion in the area of the general residence district to be counted toward the total area required for the construction of multifamily residence located in the highway district pursuant to section two-point-four. I'll await a motion with respect to that request.
Yes, sir.
So made by Mr. Brady, seconded by Mr. Perry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. The, therefore, the various requests are, are granted, and we will now proceed to the remaining business of the evening, and I will be quite happy to return the gavel to Mr. Mulvaughill if we can find him.
He's right over here.
There he is, there he is. Step right over here, and, and so this, one, Ramonda brings one thing to my attention that we, we might need from the applicant, and it, it's really a procedural matter of not, it doesn't affect the decision, which points out to me in, in the note that the variance timeline ends on four-nineteen, and we may need more time for the completion of the decision.
Yeah, of course.
We have the consent of the applicant...
Of course, yes, yeah.
For that extension of time to allow the preparation and filing of the decision. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ramonda. That being the case, I will now give the file to Ramonda and surrender the, well, I was gonna say, oh, I, actually, I can surrender the gavel because now we have one.
Thank you, everybody. Much appreciated.
There you are, sir.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, all. Good night.
All right. I'm here for the next one.
I'm here?
Uh, yes, no, maybe.
Okay.
All right, I guess you stay.
She hit the first one? Yes.
Well, this is, this is a request amended.
This is, this is an amendment. Katniss?
Yeah, this is just for amendment.
Oh, let me move out of here. I'll switch the signs around here, Mr. Chairman, so that you're back in control.
You said I was only on this and the last one.
We'll move over here.
It's just for an amendment, so he can sit, but it's council's decision if he wants to...
It's only to accept it.
It's just to accept the plan of...
Just to accept the plan of change in the...
The plan of record.
Well, with more cars.
No, no, no. No, I am, yes, yes.
Well, you guys can debate that.
Patrick, this, the issue was at the...
Hang on one second, Jimmy.
We, we have to get ourselves reorganized here. Make sure we fit in the seats and all that.
No, not staying in the station.
Well, Jack will have to forfeit his...
Maybe you're on for the rest of the night.
Yeah.
I stand corrected. I thought this was an amended decision that didn't need you. Evidently, it does, but it doesn't. The others...
You realize I get called at five o'clock at night.
The others, who says Ken is not here, so...
Not, not about you.
Sixty-nine Providence Highway, five-hundred Providence Highway, two new applications.
Okay.
And then Lennox Street is a new application as you say, in the...
I think I've spent half my life down there. Did you go like you said you were going to? Did you study it all?
I'll, I'll refrain with my comments right now.
Uh-oh. Then don't bring me up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
As you opened the hearing like you did last time.
You're my, you're my resident expert down there, so, um, okay, are we still on? Okay.
On what?
I believe we, on the air.
John Perry. So we've got a, a case here, eighteen-twenty-five, from two thousand and eighteen. Three forty-seven Everett Street was the former Kyle Holtman property that owns, that has been purchased by Peter Katniss to central Chrysler Plymouth. And we granted permission in two thousand and eighteen for open lot storage of automobiles with some restrictions, fencing and so forth.
Shrubberries.
Shrubberries and the like. Mr. Hillyard is here for an amendment to that plan.
Let me, um...
For the record.
Before we use the word amendment, yes, and for the record, during the discussion of that hearing, you asked the question of me, are you looking for six hundred and fifty cars maximum? Because the record, the, the document that we submitted to you showed two hundred and fifty cars. Our intention was always to have six hundred and fifty. It sounds like a big number, but that was our intention because when, in order to make our case, we showed you six acres of land that that was just loaded with outdoor storage of stuff Kyle Holtman had over there for the past fifty years or so. So at the end of the hearing, you said you would like, you would like us to prevent, present you with a plan that showed fencing and that showed shrubbery and that showed the, the cars. So what you have now is a plan that shows additional fencing, additional shrubbery as you requested, so that you won't view this from the front going, going past, and how the cars would be sighted, and that's the...
That's the, that's the former, and this is the new?
Yeah, that's correct.
Oh.
That's the new one, right there. All seeing within...
You have the file?
Six acres.
Okay. Do you have a, Jim, do you have a copy of the minutes?
Why?
Yeah.
I do not.
You have the decision?
I do not, but Ramonda and I had this conversation.
I'm sorry?
Ramonda and I had the conversation about the six, the number six.
I just need to confirm that I said six fifty.
You did, yeah.
It is two hundred cars, and you asked, he asked, he asked a question, would it be left to do more return, how many cars would you want to store there, mostly, he said up to six fifty. That's what he said.
Okay, where's six fifty come from?
Apparently from the question. As I understand this, I, I, I'm sorry, may I?
Sure, no, I'm just trying to refresh my memory.
Because I, I, I think I have some idea of what was going on, but maybe I don't, but as I understand it, the number of six hundred or six fifty appears to have arisen from a conversation that council had with, with, with the chairman. The problem that I'm looking at in this case, the request was granted, the hearing was closed, the, as, as we all know, the, the plans that go with any decision are part of the decision.
Right.
And I'm looking at a plan that, as I understand it, was the original, a copy of the original plan with respect to the decision, and it shows two hundred cars as opposed to the six hundred cars that are shown in the current plan. My, my problem with that is that if this two-hundred-car plan is a part of the record, I'm not so sure after the hearing closes that we can suddenly say, oh, well, no, we're not gonna do that, we're gonna do six hundred instead of two hundred, because that's obviously a very substantial change in the numbers of cars. What I'm, what, what's bothering me and what I'm wondering about is whether it might be necessary to have a, a new hearing in order to get to the six hundred cars, because irrespective of the conversation that council may have had with the chair, I think it's gonna look to the public as though, what are these people doing? Here's, here's a decision that they made that has a plan that's part of the decision that says two hundred, and now they've decided to say six hundred. I just, I'm unclear that we have the authority to do that.
I, um, let me just respond.
Oh, oh, by, oh, I, I, that's the purpose of my presentation, to invite a response because I'm, because I'm, I'm concerned about that.
It's always been my understanding, not an opinion, but my understanding is the evening we had this, this hearing was open, Chairman Mulvaughill, well, we're talking about the numbers of cars.
Yeah.
And the plan, the initial plan was submitted of two, whatever that's the...
The one with the two.
The question came up about the number of cars, and you asked me, are we talking six hundred and fifty cars? Because that number was included in the documentation, not in the plan, but in the documentation. And at the end of the meeting, you said, I don't mean, yeah, the board said, or you said, well, what about fencing and what about shrubbery?
I remember that.
And I said, yeah, we'll do the fences, we'll do the shrubbery, and we'll submit the same plan showing six hundred and fifty cars. That's what I said. And that's how we left it. We've been going around and around on this one. It's not your fault. I mean, we, meaning myself and my other side.
Well, tell you, let, let...
So it came down to, my understanding was I was gonna give you a new pla, a substituted plan of record because we were increasing the shrubs and the fence and the cars, we weren't increasing the cars.
Jimmy, with all due respect, let me...
Yeah.
The other plan was show two hundred.
I wanna hear the minutes.
Okay.
I'll go, I'll go to the minutes. I'll, I referenced it with another meeting, I went down to Ramonda, I put the headphones on, had to get a recollection of what was said by the applicant on another application. I'll listen to the minutes, that's the tell-all, and then just come back.
That's fine. And, and I, I understand Mr. Riley's point.
Yeah, because it does look like a reach, you know, if we granted two hundred and then, well, you said up to six fifty. I'm not saying that you didn't say it or I didn't say that, because I, honestly, I, at fifty-three, I'm, you know, got some memory issues, so it's, it happens.
Just one thing to clarify the numbers.
Yeah.
I hear, I hear a number of six fifty roaming around the room. The amended plan that has now been submitted refers to six hundred and not six fifty.
Well, six hundred.
So just so the record's clear as to whatever the...
Let me listen to the minutes.
Does this, is this the shrubbery?
That's the fence and the shrubbery.
The fencing, because the copy of the plan...
Yeah.
That I had seen earlier that showed the six hundred...
Was without...
Somehow had omitted the shrubbery.
It did, it, no, you're absolutely right. This is why, this is why it took us...
But this one does.
No, it took us this long to get before you.
All right.
Because we were sending plans, Ramonda being as competent as anyone has ever sat there, would say, bring them back and say, you don't have this. Okay, and we redo the plan, you don't have this. So we finally got the plans, I, in my opinion, according to what we agreed to, and that's the plan with the shrubbery and the fence and everything else.
Let me just listen to the minutes.
And that's fine.
Come back in on the, the seventh.
If, um...
Second, seventh.
Seventh, yeah. Come back in on the seventh.
Seventh.
And if I said what I said, then we'll have to, we'll have to revise or actually look at what Phil is saying here, because, I mean, again, if, in fact, I did say that, and there was some ambiguity though, I tend to agree with him that, you know, unless it was approved at six hundred, not up to.
Well, you're, okay, you're, you're referring an approval, you're referring to the plan, not a num, I mean, I don't think a motion was made to approve this for two hundred and fifty cars. I think you approved it based on the plan, which I agree with.
We're getting into murky...
Oh, I think, I think that was the problem.
It's incorporated by reference.
No, I, I agree with you. I don't think there was any specific number in the discussion.
Okay.
And it's, but that was my concern.
Like, it was my understanding.
Whereas we know that the plan obviously is part of the record, and the plan said two, and it just...
Since I'm the person in question, let me listen to the minutes, and we're back on the seventh, okay, Jim?
Sounds good.
We'll find, we'll find some resolution, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Sixty-nine Boston Providence Highway, nineteen oh seven. Mr. Shelby.
John, why don't you announce it, Ramonda? Good, good morning. Good evening.
How are you?
How's it going?
Hi, Mrs. Shelby.
Hi.
How are you?
Hi, Dan, hi.
John, have a seat, and then we're gonna need your ads and your affidavit, please.
Ads.
David.
I'll pick out the web, listen to that.
When you...
For the record, ads and the affidavit.
Okay.
Mr. Brady and Mrs., Mr. Riley, looking for April fourth and Mar, March twenty-eighth and April fourth.
April fourth.
April fourth, attested by Counsel O'Reilly.
March twenty-eighth.
March twenty-eighth, being attested by Mr. Brady. The application is in order, the advertisements are in order. Let me read the public notice, and then we'll hear from the applicant. The notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeal, the town in all, will hold a public hearing in room twelve of the municipal office building on April sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, at seven fifteen P.M. under request of Rojo Corporation, case number nineteen oh seven, with respect to property located at sixty-nine Boston Providence Highway in an M Manufacturing District. The application requests a special permit under section five-point-three of the zoning bylaw to allow moving the location of two existing signs and making one new electronic sign. Dimensions of new sign are eighty square feet total. Plans are on file with the application in the office of the ZBA, be viewed during normal working hours Monday through Thursday, eight, eight A.M. to four P.M. All the statutory requirements having been met, I hereby declare the hearing open. Mr. Shelby, for the record, identify yourself and who's with you this evening, and you may proceed.
Before you get too far into it, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, Mr. Riley.
I hate to be the skunk at the lawn party.
Uh-oh.
But I think that it's fairly clear that this application has been brought under the wrong section of the bylaw.
Well, let's hear you.
It's been brought under section five-point-three, which deals with non-conforming uses. We're talking about a sign. This is a case that needed to be brought under the signed bylaw provisions of the bylaw, most specifically section six-point-two-one, which permits the Board of Appeal to grant departures from the requirements of the zone bylaw.
Well, let's hear from the applicant as to how he arrived at this rationale.
Obviously, 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 five-three, as we know, generally deals with non-conforming buildings, and we're, we're familiar with that. We've dealt with that, you know, many times, but before, and this really, I, I'm not doing this to raise, you know, a, a problem, but I, I'm looking really for the, the interests of, of the applicant, that the, the applicant really doesn't wanna have a permit brought under the wrong section of the bylaw and have some issue developed down the line that if we, let's assume for purposes of discussion, that with respect to the merits of the, of that with respect to the merits of the, of the request, we think that it's, uh, something worth looking at. We don't wanna grant that, and suddenly discover that this whole thing arose under the wrong section of the bylaw, and there are notice problems, and on and on.
Understood. Let's hear, Mr. Shelby, how did you arrive at 5.3? Did you seek advice, or who'd you talk to?
Good evening. Um, so, 5.3 does not refer to uses, it refers to structures. Um, after speaking with the code enforcement officer, he was dead-set on, uh, 5.3 being the correct statute to bring under.
Mr. Schubert or Wolf?
Schubert. And, uh, and the, the 5.3 clearly does not state, I guess, stated here on the record, does not refer to uses, it's non-conforming structures, 5.3. The Board of Appeals may award a special permit to reconstruct, extend, alter, or change a non-conforming structure in accordance with this section. Uh, it doesn't refer to uses at all in the whole 5.3.
Well, this is what we're gonna get into in the next hearing, Phil.
Well, the, the next, the next hearing, uh, which, I, as I understand it, may have some, some different issues, but the next hearing seems to have been brought under the right section, as one would expect.
I think if you're going for a different sign.
It's brought under section, well, more or less under the right section, it references 6.2, which is the, the appropriate sign section for, I mean, I don't think, that I, I can't recall, in all the years that I've sat here, that the board has ever dealt with a sign issue under a non-conforming U-section. I think every single time we have ever dealt with it, it's been under the provisions of the bylaw to deal with signs, and I, I, I.
Mr. Riley, I was thinking about you saying.
I would have to tell you that I would be quite astonished if Mr. Schubert thought that this was the way that we're not to deal with a sign, with a request for a sign bylaw.
So.
I'd be curious to see what he had to say about it, but, uh, it sure doesn't look right to me.
The, the reason being is that the current signs are non-conforming, and he, he was dead-set that 5.3 had to do with non-conforming structures, and since these signs are, are non-conforming, the special permit rules for a non-conforming structure are under 5.3. Because we're not taking a conforming sign and moving it, we're doing a non-conforming.
You, you know, if, if, if Schubert said this was the way to go, then, uh, but I, I'd be, I'd be very curious to, uh, make some inquiry of him somewhere along the way, as to whether he thought this was the way it ought to be done.
He did it at the office.
But if you wanna go ahead and listen to the, the merits, why, that, that, that's fine, but as far as the merits are concerned, I think we certainly have to look to the provisions of the sign.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, put it this way, John, we'll hear your case, we'll, we'll roll it on it tonight, okay, and then we'll confer with Mr. Schubert, you know, to see if there's any miscommunication. I do have a reference point from Mr. Schubert regarding another case, saying the billboards are non-conforming signs. No, uh, he also said the structures, um, well, that's in another case, but, um, if you sat and you were clear with him, that he said to apply under this. Yeah, if he said to apply under this, then the floor's yours, and then we can proceed with it, and then, uh, we'll confer with.
Clear as day, he did it in the zoning office, reminder was there too, as well, and we rolled it together, and he told me we were talking and discussing it, and he says, clear as day, 5.3.
Okay, so make your case, John.
Okay. Um, currently, I have the plan for everyone to see.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Do you get one?
I'm good. I got one in the file, but go ahead, yes.
So, I'll first go over the layout. Okay, sorry, it's kinda, currently, uh, as you all are familiar, Rojo, Rojo Route 1, uh, historically, since it's been built in the 60s, it had two signs, it had the existing signs that mark here and here. Uh, that's on the southbound side of the lot and the northbound side of the lot. The, um, the signs currently, don't know how, one is actually over the property, land, state property, and same with, and they're price signs, they're digital price signs. Uh, after surveying the lot and speaking with, uh, Mr. Glosser, he put, we decided to put a sign in the center, and we're not expanding any non-conformity, all we're doing is combining the square footage of this sign and that sign, and putting a center sign. Uh, 5.3 specifically calls out and says that, um, it asked the, the board to make sure that the use is not detrimental beyond, um, more detrimental, and, and, and it's my opinion that having one single sign is less detrimental for a couple of reasons. Number one, and when a person's driving by for safety, instead of looking at two signs, she's looking at one, they're checking out two price signs, they have the same message, it's kind of redundant.
So you're reducing two signs to one?
Correct.
That's a good thing.
Correct. Um, and that's less, so less, so safety-wise on the highway, people, less people are steering off to go on two signs versus one. Uh, secondly, it just makes more sense from a visual standpoint, people tend to look, if you notice at gas stations, all modern gas stations have a center sign that has the price, not on the edges of lots, um, that people look for. So, the second part of what makes it more safe is that if someone's driving by and looking for a, a price sign, their natural inclination would be to stand at, to look at the center of the lot to find it, and they won't, and then they have to then scan left or right to find the sign, which, again, we're talking about seconds, but that's seconds that still their eyes will be on the road versus not on the road. Um, and with that being, with that being said, I, I couldn't, I, I didn't think of any other reason why I would expand to a non-conformity, 'cause it's the size of this, the size, they're not going bigger, uh, where it's staying the same, all we're doing is just moving the sign, the two signs, combining them into one.
Is, um, has the state ever called you on the, uh, sign being on the, the highway?
Never, we just discovered that when this happened.
How long has that been there?
Since 1967, I think.
State's on top of things most of the time. Maybe senior put it there. Uh, well, again, as Phil said, you're getting rid of two and making one, um, just wanna see what Schubert says about the, the actual application, I can't see an issue with it.
But he has another matter, I think, is this one other side, is there, is there something besides that that you had?
No, that was it, just a sign.
That's it, just, just this one side?
Just a sign. He decided to draw the whole plan, I think they wanted to run the bill up, but.
Really, I know, really.
Well, I was looking at the, uh, the, the application talks about making one new electronic sign, is that, is that the one that you're talking about?
Yeah, so when they say electronic, there's, there's, there's a, there's a difference between, uh, in my opinion, there's a difference between an electronic billboard that has a moving image, you know, when you see a thirty, the, the sign says thirty seconds, versus a price sign has a static image of the price. Uh, for example, the only time you change the price sign is when the prices change, so you'd either go out there with the old school, the pole, and take the numbers down, or you just push a button and it changes that way. So it's electronic in nature, but we're not adding any more, it's already electronic now, it's just, it's staying electronic. That's not adding anything to that, nor is it, uh, taking away, it's the same exact LED billboard, just having the prices in electronic format versus sending it out there at the pole on the edge of Route 1.
Anything further, Mr. Riley?
Yeah, I'm just trying to the, uh, hang on one second. Hang on a second. Where is the electronic sign? What are the hours of illumination of the sign?
The hours, it's, uh, 24 hours. We can't take the price sign down, because, uh, by code of Massachusetts, you have to post your price when you're open. You can't not have a post, posted price.
Hang on a second. All right. Hang on, temporary signs and originalize. The, uh, what, what's the height of the sign?
Right on the, uh, plan, it is thirty-seven, no, I'm sorry, it is 240 inches.
No, the, it, the height off the ground?
240 inches.
And how many, help me out as to how many feet that is?
Twenty.
About twenty.
Twenty, 'cause 25 is the limit that you have, that's why I was curious whether you.
They just said 20.
Twenty? Did you get it right?
Twenty, yeah.
Hey, that's, that's why we.
That's what, what's my state college education.
That's why we have them here.
My parents got their money where.
And, and you said it was 80 square feet?
Correct.
And you permitted 100, so that it's within the, uh, yeah, within the, and that will be, uh, that's the only sign that's gonna be sitting there.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Perry?
No, I have no, uh, issues at all with it, in fact, I kinda like the lit-up signs better than what, when they put the spotlights on, you know, the, the old-fashioned type of thing, so, no, that's, it's part of the business.
Thanks, Jack. Mrs. Anderson?
I'm very fine with it.
Mr. Brady?
I'm good.
Anybody in the audience wanna be heard on case number, uh, 1907, 69 Providence Highway, sign at Rojo's? Anybody? Once? Twice? Pleasure of the board.
Motion to close.
Motion to close by Mr. Brady, do I hear a second? Second, I may, Mr. Perry, all those in favor, pose.
I'd like to see one thing, though, that the price of gas went maybe to 24.9 cents a gallon, if I remembered in New Hampshire.
What is, what is the pleasure of the board?
Or 19 cents.
Did we vote to close?
We voted to close.
So.
We need a motion.
You wanna verify it before we vote on it?
Well, yes, because, um, that would be to Phil's point, um, regarding making sure.
Yeah, just verify.
So it's just proven that we, you know, make sure that you're in under the right application, and then we've got May 7th, we'll be in, and it'll be.
Thank you.
If it's the right application.
Hold on.
You don't have to be here, John, we're just gonna vote.
Okay, good.
Yes, just wanna make sure that we're on the right ground.
I'll talk to the chair.
Okay.
And it's for your benefit, as opposed to ours, to make sure we're on the right ground.
Very good, all right. Have a good evening.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Worked hard, guys.
24 now.
Okay. Okay, so. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Hearn on behalf of the applicant, and. David, how are you?
Fine, David Hearn Jr. on behalf of Clear Channel Outdoor Inc., the applicant, um, given, uh.
Mrs. Anderson and Mr. Br, uh, Perry, if you could be so kind to look for, we're looking for March 21st and March 28th.
I have March 21st, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Mr. Perry. Thanks, Mrs. Anderson. 21st and the 28th, the March have been attested to by members Perry and Anderson, and the application looks to be in order, let me read the public notice, counselor, and then I'll give you the floor, okay?
Thank you.
Um, notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeal, the Town and Hall, will hold a public hearing in Room 12 of the Municipal Office Building on April 16, 2019, at 7:30 p.m. on the request of Clear Channel Outdoor, case number 1908, with respect to property located on 500 Boston Providence Turnpike in a highway business HB district. The application requests a special permit under 6.2 of the zoning bylaws to allow the conversion of an existing static billboard to a digital billboard having the capacity of changing messages and content through electronic means, together with such other or further relief as the ZBA zoning Board of Appeals may determine to be appropriate. Plans not filed with the application in the office of the zoning Board of Appeals, and may be viewed during normal working hours Monday through Thursday, 8:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. All the statutory requirements having been met, I hereby declare the hearing open. Counselor Hearn for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again, uh, members of the board, for the record, David Hearn Jr., 470 Washington Street, on behalf of Clear Channel Outdoor Inc. With me this evening, seated at the table with me is Michael Morello, who's Vice President of Real Estate and Public Affairs for Clear Channel Outdoor.
Hi, Mr. Morello. Good evening.
And, uh, behind me, Yano Amara, who's Director of Real Estate and Public Affairs.
Hi, Mr. Amara. Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, um, I have a couple of brief remarks, and then we have a presentation we'd like to, uh, uh, give the board, a little bit of a video, um, and appreciate, uh, your indulgence on that.
Go right ahead, David.
This is an application for, um, a special permit to allow the conversion of an existing two-sided billboard located at 500 Boston Providence Highway, that's the Galleria on the Green property, um, on the northbound side of Route 1, and there has been for a number of years, a, what we call a static billboard, that is a billboard where the message has to be changed periodically, paper and now vinyl they use. We would like to convert that to a digital billboard on the same site, it would be the same size, the support would be different, we probably would want to go with a monopole, um, rather than the four separate supports that are based in concrete now. Um, the, um, change to a digital, uh, billboard is something that is an attempt, and, and not more than attempted, it does keep up with the times. Digital billboards are able to respond to changes in messages more quickly, they're controlled electronically, rather than having to send somebody out on a ladder to go and change the, the message. Um, it is, uh, the policy of the Commonwealth, and it's the policy of Clear Channel Outdoor, that, um, a certain number of hours each month are given to the Commonwealth and to certain other public organizations in the Commonwealth. Um, we, uh, met last week with the town manager to, um, have a discussion about what we'd like to do in terms of providing several hours a week for town announcements, or the town, uh, different community organizations in the town. Um, and that is something that, uh, Clear Channel has done in other municipalities, where they've had these digital billboards. As far as, uh, the considerations under the bylaw, I've given you my memo this evening, which I think responds, uh, to the different considerations. Um, this is something that is, uh, we think would be a benefit for people in the town, people traveling through the town, we think it would be a benefit for town government. Uh, we think it would be a benefit for many of the nonprofit and community organizations that need to get a message out. Occasionally, there are emergency messages that can be posted, um, such as school closings, or delayed trash pickup, or closing of roads due to accidents, amber alerts, that type of announcement, uh, is commonly made on these. Um, the, uh, practice of Clear Channel also is that they will, um, generally make an annual, uh, mitigation payment to the municipality where the billboard is located, um, and that is also a further benefit, a financial benefit to the town. It's not something that's going to increase traffic, the traffic is already on Route 1, this is not like we're bringing in a new store or something, it's, it's not going to create utility problems. The environmental issues are minimal, I have spoken with Mr. Getz, and we expect we're going to file with the Conservation Commission, because, uh, that neighborhood just has lots of wetlands. We're in a highway business, so, we already have a billboard there, so the land use compatibility is not changing, uh, we're not affecting that in any negative way. The visual compatibility, uh, we think that a, an up-to-date billboard compared with the older billboard that's there now, and the older support for that, uh, this will be, uh, an improvement, it's also going to be built according to all the codes, so it'll be compliant, it will fit in with the surrounding structures. Um, I've discussed the fiscal impacts in terms of what the Clear Channel will provide, and as far as the process goes, we've met with the, uh, town manager to discuss it, I also had a conversation with the Police Department Safety Officer regarding this matter, and he indicated to me that he had no problem with it, uh, in terms of safety considerations, traffic considerations, and that I could, uh, forward that, uh, message to the board. There have also been studies done, and I'm, uh, happy to give you articles related to that, show that these, uh, digital billboards do not create any traffic concerns, the Federal Highway Safety Administration has looked into that, uh, they don't cause any safety issues, um, in terms of the way the messages are presented. The messages are presented not in the, as a blinking or moving sign all the time, they just, it's like changing the channel on television. You've changed the channel, you've got the message. It is a, um, uh, message that is normally there for about 10 seconds.
10 seconds, yes.
10 seconds, uh, so it's not like it's flashing by, uh, quickly. You've seen them in other places, Rentham, and Walpole, uh, and other spots. Um, so I'd like, if we could, to make the presentation, and then we'll come back, and I know there may be some questions, um, and, and discuss some of the legal considerations also, but, Mr. Chairman, if that's all right with you.
Yours, Mr. Hearn.
Uh, Yano, are we okay with lighting, or?
I think we're good.
We, we didn't bring popcorn, I'm sorry, but, and as far as the television goes, we, is this, is this okay, as far as the TV goes?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. All right.
My name is Mike McGlynn, I'm Mayor of the City of Medford, I've been for the last 25 years, and we have had a great relationship with Clear Channel, and have brought great improvements to the quality of life in our community. When we were approached by Clear Channel to change some of our staff boards or the upcoming boards, we were really excited, not only did it give us an opportunity to add free advertising for nonprofits, it also gives the opportunity to dilate the revenue and help offset a lot of the problems that we faced during this recession.
My name is Lou Musica, I'm Senior Vice President of domestic digital, or Clear Channel Outdoor. I oversee all the digital billboard installations in the United States. The current model we use is static advertising, there's nobody, there's no video, and there's no information. Our messages stay static for 10 seconds, and then change to another advertising instantaneously. When you compare a digital billboard to a similar-sized sign, the amount of lighting is very significant. Our goal here is to make sure that these signs are never too bright for conditions. In the past, billboards were hand-painted, today, we're simply taking what's similar to a slideshow and placing it up on the sign, so we can change that copy instantaneously from over to future. Law enforcement is a big part of this, so if we have an issue that comes up in the community and want people to be aware of, within five to 10 minutes, the information can be electronically transmitted to that board, you can't get that on a staff. We're all very familiar with cameraless, we're proud to say there have been a large number of children that have either been found, or a tip was generated because of color photographs on a Clear Channel billboard. I'm telling you, I've been on old modus, I do talk to our advertising companies, years and years now, but I gotta tell you, the emergence of digital is just incredible. of digital is just incredible. We can instantaneously change things. If a manufacturer sends a special in the morning, I can have that up for now with you. You best stuff up for the weekend and the following months. I love it.
One of the greatest aspects of this thing, the benefit that all of the nonprofits share with the community is educational programs, support for seniors, support for Little League teams, hockey teams. And if they were not electronic, we couldn't turn them over as quickly as we do to meet everybody's needs for their specific parts.
My name is Susan Zucker. I am the president of the Conquer Cancer Coalition of Massachusetts. So proud to say we have about 5,000 conquer cancer place in the world. When people called, majority of them would say, "I saw a billboard on the highway, and I knew I wanted to be part of that effort." The colors are amazing, and the light is amazing. I'm so excited when I see it because it just jumps right out at you, and we're so grateful to Clear Channel for all they've done.
My name is Ashley Passiades. I'm the president of One Mission. Our event, The Cancer Buzz-Off, is really super fun and cool that we get participants to shave off their hair to help children and the families living with, who gets a cancer at the hospital. The first year, we had 21 participants, and last year, we did 450. The gross revenue from that event the first year was $34,000, and last year, 2012, we did just over $600,000.
We have tremendous support, and everybody's used it from the Jingle Bell Festival here to the store community to Rose, Plum, and Sonya. It's a real positive effect on the quality of life in the community.
This wouldn't happen if I had Clear Channel on digital billboards. So, thank you.
Nice. I don't see many of those. Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, that's presented as an illustration of how these billboards work. Certainly, they're commercial uses, but they're also community uses and charitable organizations that benefit from these. This is, it's somewhat of an unusual thing because there aren't many billboards in the town. Billboards are non-conforming uses that are governed both by our local bylaw and by state statute. The Outdoor Advertising Board has a great deal of control over this. So any billboard has to be, these all are permitted by the state, and the state has a say on conversions and so forth. Thing about billboards is that if you have one, you can keep it, but we don't have new ones going in. Our bylaw doesn't allow it, and the state has limited it also. But the existing billboard, this one, is allowed to remain, and there are others along Route 1 and a few other places in town because they are effectively grandfathered. What we're asking the board to do here is to allow this non-conforming use to be modified by switching it from a static billboard to a, to the digital billboard that can be changed electronically. It's a use that I believe is in keeping with the purpose of the signed bylaw, which includes as one of its goals or objectives, the facilitation of efficient communications to ensure that people are able to receive the messages they need or want. I'm quoting from Section 6.2.1. Number four of that list, they support business vitality by avoiding burdensome procedures and restrictions at this type of signage. It will encourage local businesses. We've heard from some of the commercial enterprises that thought that these were a good way to get their message out. It's not going to create any problems in terms of the visual environment, which is another one of the goals, to protect the visual environment. And in terms of promoting good relationships between signs and the building's environment to which they relate, the fourth of the four goals or objectives, this does not violate that. It's already there, and it's an appropriate location when we talk about Route 1. Now, I understand there's some concern, and has been some concern expressed to me about how the board handles this, because billboards are referred to in the bylaw as non-conforming uses, and there are some limitations on what you can do with them under some circumstances. But, you know, if you lose the permit from the Outdoor Advertising Board, the billboard has to come down. If it didn't have a permit, then, you know, and it was a violation, the building inspector could require it to be taken down. We're not in that category.
So they have a permit?
We have a permit.
And it has not expired?
Nope. No. So that is allowed, and Section 6.2.9, Paragraph 3, refers to the removal requirements.
Yes.
6.2.8 requires that all signs, not just billboards, but all signs have to be maintained in a safe and legible condition and would have to be replaced if they're damaged or deteriorated or there are missing elements. And they have to be conformed to the state building code. The situation we're in is not exactly the same as what's referred to in, I think, in the second paragraph of Section 6.2.9. What we have is an allowed, or allowed as non-conforming, non-accessory sign under Paragraph 3 it's referred to, and non-accessory signs are defined also in the bylaw. But what we have is a non-conforming use that this board has the authority to allow a change of that use under 6.2.21, which gives the special permit granting authority, which in this case is your board, the authority to give relief from any requirement of the signed bylaw, Section 6.2 of the zoning bylaw, provided that such relief shall not result in substantial detriment to the neighborhood. I submit to you that in this case, the conversion of an older billboard on an old-style platform, four different supports, being replaced by an up-to-date, code-compliant, digital billboard is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, just in terms of the construction. When you factor in that it doesn't create a safety problem, and I'm happy to distribute articles we have regarding that in terms of studies that have been done by the federal government or on behalf of the federal government, and the fact that this provides a benefit to local organizations, a benefit to the, to the town, we can pass the rest of those out. I think that's, yeah. That enhances the consideration of whether this creates a substantial detriment to the neighborhood. I don't see, we don't see any detriment to the neighborhood. We see a sign on Route 1 that would be the same size as the existing sign, but would be up-to-date, would provide a greater service to the community than the existing billboard. And so I think we meet the requirements of Section 6.2.21. That section, that subsection Point 21, gives the board the authority to grant the relief that we're looking for, which is simply to substitute one form of the billboard use for an updated form of that billboard use. And that's all we're asking for. So we're happy to take questions. These fellows who are with me know an awful lot more about billboards than I know. I've learned a bit about them in the course of this representation, but they can answer the questions about how these have worked in other towns, what the response has been with the services they were able to provide. So that really is my presentation for now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, David. Very quickly, on your application, it says you're coming in under 6.2.
Right.
Shouldn't it come in under a specific heading? Or is your catch-all together with any such or further?
No, my catch-all is 6.2, as well as the language about such other and further relief. 6.2 is the signed bylaw.
Yeah, but shouldn't it reference what you're asking us to do? 6.2.21?
Anything within 6.2 is the signed bylaw, and that's what I'm asking for. We're asking for relief. We're referring to the non-conforming, non-accessory signs that's found in 6.2.9. But my applications normally refer to the larger section of the bylaw that contains, and this is all within the bylaw.
But I think, I think what the chairman's getting at is that specifically, any request, any relief that we would have to give would come under Section 6.2.1 that you referred to in the course of your presentation.
Yes, and that's what gives you the authority.
I think that's what the chairman's referring to, that he, he thought that an application might perhaps refer more specifically to the particular section of the bylaw under which the board would have to act. I think that's all he's talking about.
Well, I, I'm referring to 6.2.21.
I know.
Because that's what gives you the authority.
That's the authority, yeah.
And I understood some questions that come up about where your authority was. Your authority is there.
That's what the authority is.
But what we're asking for comes under the general heading of sign relief, under 6.2.
So, I listened to the last hearing that I had to sit on the sidelines for, and unfortunately, more fortunately, depending on what side of the aisle you're on, some testimony came in via a letter to the last hearing, or the first hearing, not the last hearing, that the board would have liked a chance to peruse and digest from another attorney. That being said, it's come to my attention that the building inspector was approached about five years ago by another applicant to do the same thing, and there was a lengthy conversation with that sign company, almost the same application that you were proposing to go digital, with the former landlord, Mr. Pizzo, who's now deceased, who's a nice guy, God rest his soul. And it went in front of David DeLuca with Mark Schubert, the building inspector, and Mark asked David to render an opinion on it. And I have his opinion that was emailed from David, excuse me, from David on behalf of Mark Schubert. It was actually deceiving. It says, "Mark, this is to confirm that we discuss provisions of the Know-It-Signed Bylaw."
Mr. Chairman, can I ask, is that opinion rendered with respect to this application?
Uh, non-conforming signs.
With res-
To non-conforming signs.
With res-, or is it with respect to something that was passed for several years ago?
No, it's Section 2.2.21. It's a clarification of 6.2.21.
And this just came in tonight?
Yeah, 9:0, 5:12 p.m., excuse me, 5:12.
Okay.
Says, "Mark, this is, this is to confirm that we discuss provisions of the Know-It-Signed Bylaw. Specifically, we discuss the provisions of Section 6.2.8, non-conforming signs. From this provision and paragraphs which follow, there is authority as of right to repair or to restore a non-conforming sign, but no authority to enhance or improve the signed technology. Notwithstanding the constraint of this section, Section 6.2.21 special permit authorizes the ZBA to provide a waiver from any provision of the signed bylaw, but only upon good cause shown when such relief shall not result in substantial detriment to the neighborhood." Which is basically what you said.
Right.
You know? But I wanted a clarification on that because I'm gonna, I want to speak to Mr. Schubert on it because, you know, like I said, he's brought some information to us at the very, like, literally at the 23rd hour on this. And I understand the powers to be upstairs would like it as well, but I just want to make sure that we're acting in good faith here and that we're allowed to do this within the parameters of 6.2.21, which certainly sounds like it to me as a non-lawyer, but at the end of the day, I mean, I've been wrong and you've been wrong. So...
Rarely. Rarely you have been wrong, Mr. Chairman. And I was referring only to you, of course.
You're so quick.
We assumed that was you.
So quick. He's polished, I tell you.
We assumed that's what he was saying.
Let me say this, Mr. Chairman. This is an issue this board has heard me speak on before in other contexts. Section 6.2.21 is a section that allows the special permit granting authority to give relief from any provision of the, of the signed bylaw. Now, if it weren't for that section, the argument could be made that you'd be constrained from ever giving sign relief, and you have given sign relief time and again because Point 21 authorizes the board to grant special permit relief upon a finding that the relief will not work a substantial detriment to the neighborhood. So that is, and I'm glad to hear from counsel on that, the town council has referenced that section also, the one that I was arguing to. But I understand if you want to speak to Mr. Schubert and maybe town council and get some clarification, because I understand this did come up late this afternoon, and you might not have had the opportunity, I'm sure you didn't have the opportunity to, to look into it as deeply as you'd like. So we understand that, but while we're all here, we're happy to answer questions, and there may be people in the audience who have questions or comments. We're happy to take that, and then you maybe have to put this over to the seventh or something.
Mr. Brady?
Yeah, just a couple of questions to get it on the record. And number, number seven, says the applicant has indicated a willingness to make an annual mitigation payment to the town so as long as the digital billboard is maintained on the proposed location. How much is that mitigation payment on an annual basis?
$25,000 per year.
$25,000 per year. Thank you. It also references in number eight that you met with the town manager to discuss the proposal. Can you just tell us what he had to say in brief?
I think he was generally in favor of it, but he understood that the decision is made here.
Okay. Thank you.
We did discuss the, the way this works in the towns, including the fact that we'd want somebody designated at town hall to sort of be the gatekeeper on announcements. Otherwise, you'd have everybody in the world trying to get their announcements in, so you have to have one person designated. He acknowledged that and said that if this goes forward, there'd be somebody designated who would be the gatekeeper on announcements going on during the public time.
All right. I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold off on my last question. I'm good with those two, thank you.
Mrs. Anderson?
Did you say something about the state being involved in some of these signs?
Right. Number one, the Outdoor Advertising Board has control of the permitting for these.
Right.
And, but also, they, Mike, what's the, the number of hours we, the Commonwealth or...
15 hours per month to the state? Are you referencing, like, the permitting process with the state?
Yes.
Okay, so...
Whatever Mr. Hearn said.
Right.
He brought in the state.
Right, so let's just say we did get the approval tonight.
Right.
And then the period expires, and then we get everything we need, we record it.
Right.
We had to notify the 300-foot list of abuttes for this meeting tonight.
Yes.
The state does a little extra. We have to notify 500 feet around the side.
Okay.
So more people can show up to the all-way meeting. So once we do that, we have to wait 30 days before we apply to the state.
Okay.
Once we do that, there's another 30 days. He waits just to make sure everybody was notified. He'll send a letter to the town, letting them know that we're, we applied for a digital billboard, just like a redundancy.
Okay.
And then there's a public meeting probably two months later, and then the public can show up and, you know, voice their opinions or concerns, have any questions.
Okay, thank you.
And then ultimately, and then they grant a permit based, the state has to grant its own permit.
That was my...
Right.
But the other involvement is that the state gets 15 hours a month for announcements or whatever.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Mr. Perry?
Just a couple. We might have gone over it, David, but I was running, writing notes on some of the last hearings we had. The area of the existing sign is there.
The square footage?
Yeah. Do you have it?
Yeah, each sign face is 14 feet by 48, so it's six...
You're talking, you're talking the proposed sign.
Well, yeah, it's not going to change the dimensions.
That's what I meant.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so it's the same size, face?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not changing that.
14 by 48.
And the duration of changing?
10 seconds. So like he mentioned earlier, it's like watching TV, hit the pause.
Yeah.
Count to 10, and then instantaneously it changes to the next second.
Is that automatic?
Automatic.
Can you do it in longer durations or...
It's mandated, mandated by the state.
Okay.
No, no less than 10.
No less than 10 seconds, but you could extend it if you had to, if somebody paid you more for the advertisement or something?
I'm not sure, but...
Yeah, but 10 seconds anyway?
Yeah, that's what we follow for all our other digits across the state, is 10 seconds, yes.
That's fine, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Perry. Mr. Breyer?
Would this be, what would be the general uses of this sign? Is this generally an advertising situation? I mean, what, if I'm driving down the highway, what am I going to see flashing up and whatnot on the side of it?
I'm going to see car ads, the car dealers, the highway one, but it could be a different array. I mean, we have our own set of standards that we don't do, like pornography and, you know, that kind of stuff.
Basically, advertising of one sort or another?
Yes.
Whether it be car dealers or...
Correct.
So if I...
And public service announcements. Because we're, we're giving the town several hours a month, five hours, I think we've talked about.
Five hours?
Five for the town and 15 for the Commonwealth.
For public service announcements.
Yeah, or community announcements. You know, the town decides to let such and such an organization, say Circle of Hope wants to, you know, announce something, they probably put their request in, and if that went up on the board, people driving up and down Route 1 would see that. If the trash pickup was delayed today because of a storm or something, that could be put out there. Delays in school opening or hazardous waste days, all those things could be put out there as part of the community announcements.
Are there any other digital billboards in town that you know of?
And know what I don't know is that.
No, no.
There are Walpole and, we're actually building one in Renton by the end of this month.
Is there one in Dedham? Are there any in Dedham? I can't recall.
I don't believe there's any in Dedham.
None in Dedham?
Not that we can recall. Foxborough?
You said there was some in, there was one in Walpole?
Walpole, correct.
Is that on Route 1?
Route 1.
That's the one.
Whereabouts?
Isn't that the one up past the big Y as you're heading toward the intersection with 95?
Right, there's actually, I think, two or three in Walpole, so there's, there's a few of them.
But the one that Mr. Hearn is referencing is somewhere between the, uh, the big Y and the intersection with ninety-five.
Right. Oh, Sharon Mass too, also.
There's one in Sharon?
Sharon, yeah.
Is that also on Route One?
Mm-hmm.
The reason I ask this, I, I, I anticipate that, I mean, it sounds like this is gonna get continued to another date and, uh, I'd like to, A, go down and take a look at this sign, I frankly haven't had the opportunity to do that yet, but I might also like to see how some of these digital signs operate along the way because I, I, I do have some concerns in terms of the requirements under six twenty-one with respect to substantial derogation. We, we don't have any now and is having one going to be a substantial derogation over the static signs that we have now? I, I don't know. I'd like to have an opportunity to see some of these, uh, and perhaps be in a better position to make a judgment, in addition obviously to the matters that the chairman spoke about with, uh, reference to speaking to Mr. Schubert.
Yeah, if I may, on, on that point, it, the, the bylaw refers to substantial detriment to the neighborhood, not derogation.
Yes, I'm sorry.
But, um, I mean, the-
Miss spoke detriment, whatever.
One, one point to keep in mind is that we already have a billboard there.
I understand.
So we're just trading one billboard for another.
The question is whether or not, in my mind, whether the, the digital billboard is a substantial detriment to the town vis a vis the static billboard that you have there now and that, and looking at some of the others that are in place in Walpole and Sharon might be of some assistance and tempting to come to a determination on that.
Is it yours now or Lamar or who's is it?
I was.
How long have you had it?
I think since at least the seventies.
The other thing, uh, the lighting, um, on these is handled in a way that it's not shooting out light that's going to be lighting up the whole neighborhood. It's controlled and, and you guys can explain that better than I can in terms of, um, you know, the way the light is produced in the, uh, on the billboard itself. It's not casting out light so that, uh, you know, anybody nearby is going to either be blinded by it or have it onto their property. That's, it's, uh, these are designed and they're able to control the light so much better than some of the older types of things that are out there. And I know that lighting is a concern. We've had that discussion on various projects.
Some isn't double-sided, is it, Dave?
It is, it's a double-sided. If you look at the plans and I, I gave Ms. Morgan the full-size, a full-size plan, which I have a copy if you want it, but it's, um, it's sort of a V shape.
That's existed somehow.
Well, you've got it right there, Mike.
Yes.
It's on the corner of the property at five hundred Providence Highway and, um, on the north corner of the property.
I just thought it was one side, that's fine.
It's V-shaped.
That's fine, I have, let me see what Schubert has to say and talk to David and we'll go from there. Anything further from the board?
You mean talking to DeLuca, yeah.
Anything further from the board? We'll open it up to the public. Anybody wanna be heard on the sign? Five hundred Boston Providence Highway, or, excuse me, Turnpike, um, the clear channel sign. Anybody wanna be heard? Mrs. Osko?
I hadn't planned on speaking, but I find the discussion interesting. Being that you're going from a static to an electric, a tonic sign, is there any involvement then with the Norwood Municipal Light Department, you know, a pole to, to connect and, you know?
Sure, it's got juice already, it's a matter of-
Well, I didn't know, you said it was a static pole, so I-
It does, but it has, it has lighting now already, so we're just changing the way it's presented.
It just needs to probably water juice. And I assume it's grounded, it's not a beacon for lightning strikes or anything like that. And I, just one more question, being that I think it is the first electronic sign of, of this nature in town, just one comment because I knew we heard at a planning board and, and I don't know if it's really gonna come down the pipe, but they had talked about maybe in the future having the whole Route One corridor study and whether or not signage is something the planning board would be looking at as a whole because to me, having an electronic sign, which I understand has a lot of good uses, in a way kinda opens up Pandora's box and unfair advertising that other companies can't avail themselves to because they're not grandfathered. And I just think this is the way of the twenty-first century for advertising, so I just thought I'd mention the Route One corridor study and looking at it.
Well, from what I understand, we're not issuing any more billboards. Is that correct, David?
You can't under the present bylaw.
Yeah, so, but if, to your point, let's say if the Osko painting wanted to change their sign down there, you could go from a placard to a digital. We've done that from some businesses. Most recently, a good friend of mine, Joey Constantino down at All Seasons Rental, he did his right in front of the Honey Baked Ham. He had a stationary one, used to be Donnie Bandoni's gas station one, and he changed it, then he changed it to electronic, and he gives us specials and stuff on it. And then David did it, uh, representing an applicant down at, um, the, um, storage facility in Anna Moss.
Space Center.
Yeah, Space Center. And we wanted to make sure that it was the timing there because, and I see it down here in the bottom here and the, uh, little blurb on your BAA, it says, "The Hill, the DOT study finds digital billboards, billboards don't distract drivers." We were concerned about distractions and, you know, it, you know, special on whatever and it keeps flashing at you, then you're looking at it and all of a sudden, you don't make that turn down there. But David through his applicant, we negotiated a timeline as far as how long it stays there and, so-
There's also one, I think, at Central Motors.
Yeah.
They, they've got a, not a billboard, but they have a, a, a sign that changes with the message, right at the corner and everything.
For the business.
No, I've seen them, I, I know they're-
Yeah, but they, they do, I think they do announcements too of, of local events and so forth sometimes. So they're out there and, um, I appreciate Mrs. Osko's comments.
Yeah, good point, Tony, good point. Uh, anybody else?
Steven?
Just, just for an information purpose, uh, there's one of those bills, billboard signs right at where McDonald's is, when you come out Washington Street and come out to, uh, Route One and Foxborough there.
Uh-huh.
You take a right to the stadium, right there where McDonald's is, and then there's a liquor store ahead, but right there at McDonald's, it's one of those billboards.
Yeah, yeah.
A digital one?
Yeah.
Yes.
Maybe have a trip down Route One and you-
Is that the, uh, trend?
Well, I wanna go down and do the, uh-
I mean, if I, if you were in front of us in ten years from now, would you say that the majority of your signs are all gonna go digital or?
Um, they serve their own unique purposes depending on where they are, so I wouldn't say all of them, but that's the trend that we're trying to do, but there's still gonna always be a place for the printed, we call it printed divine, billboards, so.
Okay.
And just for informational purposes only, I know you can't allow new, new billboards anyway. The state regulates them anyway, so like if, if this is the new sign, you have to go a thousand feet in either direction and cross the street to even allow another billboard, even if you say you changed the bylaws to allow digital. So there's so many restrictions with the state anyway, there's not gonna be like an, an inundation in the town.
Then why is there a restriction, just as a little segue? I mean, is it just to, so that they're not inundated with these?
Yeah, they don't wanna look like Vegas or Atlantic City, that kinda stuff, so.
Good, okay. Anybody else? Anybody else? Anything further from the board before I entertain a motion to continue? I'll entertain a motion to continue so we can be heard, uh, we can hear from the building inspector and town council regarding, uh, their input.
What's the next, uh?
May seventh?
That's the next date?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, but what's, what's the available time?
Uh, seven forty-five, we have seven thirty.
They'll make a mo-
Sorry, eight, eight o'clock.
Eight is open?
Yeah.
They'll make a motion to continue the hearing. It's the seventh of May at eight PM.
And reminder, you'll know how to rub that for, thank you very much, Ms. Morgan. Thank you, David. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Second in a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nobody did anything of my motion.
I, I, listen, I'm rushing you out. I told you I was wrong before. Um, do I hear a motion to continue until May seventh?
We just heard it, but we need a second.
And who seconded it? Jack seconded it. All those in favor, close. Five, no. Thank you, thank you.
All right, May, May seventh, eight PM. At eight o'clock here, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, we've got, uh, one eleven Lennox Street now.
All right. You guys are set, I'll talk to you.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Is it tomorrow yet?
Not yet.
Getting close.
Are you in one eleven Lennox?
I am, I am, yes. I gotta turn around, click my heels and, uh, get the file.
Put your application, just, you know?
I've got, uh, we also dealing with the Manhattan Street Plan.
Yeah.
Um, let me give you the affidavit on this one, Mr. Chairman.
Steve, I talked to Tony, I'm sorry to get back to the other day, but I, I, so. Mr. Riley, we're looking, and Mr. Brady, we're looking for the twenty-first of March and the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-first, twenty-eighth, twenty-one. Advertisements are in order as attested by members Riley and Brady, the twenty-first and the twenty-eighth of March. Um, let me read the public notice, the affidavit's in order, I'll read the notice, David, and then, uh, the floor will be yours.
Thank you.
Notice is hereby given to Board of Appeal, the town in order will hold a public hearing in room twelve with the municipal office building on April sixteen, two thousand nineteen, seven forty-five PM on the request of Manhattan Realty LLC, case number nineteen oh nine, with respect to property located at one eleven Lennox Street in the GB District, General Business. The application requests a special permit under six point one of the zoning bylaws to allow less parking than normally required under zoning bylaws in connection with the establishment of tenants, tenancies and businesses in an existing shopping plaza pursuant to section six point one, point one-two of the zoning bylaws, together with such other or further relief as the zoning Board of Appeal may determine to be appropriate. Plans are on file with the application in the office of the ZBA. It can be viewed during normal working hours, Monday through Thursday, eight PM, eight AM to four PM. All the statutory requirements having been met, I hereby declare the hearing open. Attorney Hearn for the applicant.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, David Hearn Jr. of four seventy Washington Street in Norwood on behalf of the applicant, Manhattan Realty LLC, which is the owner of the property at one eleven Lennox Street. With me this evening is Steve Miller, who's, uh, one of the managers of Manhattan Realty's property and he, uh, their properties. He has a great deal of responsibility experience with respect to one eleven Lennox, which is that, um, strip mall, uh, I don't know if that's the correct term, but the collection of stores that runs from the cor, on Lennox Street from the corner of Manhattan Street down opposite the Shaw's Plaza, across the street from the Shaw's Plaza. And, um, that is a business that has a number of, uh, location, rather, has a number of different businesses. Blue Hills Bank is there, um-
Jam Time.
Jam Time. We were before you, about a year and a half ago on Jam Time. Also, um, there's a credit union at the other end, there's a pizza shop, there's, um, uh, other subway, other kinds of service, uh, services there, um, Shiva Bazaar, which is a, a nothing grocery store.
Beauty Supply.
Hmm? Beauty Supply. I don't visit that very often, but, uh, it is there, you're right. There's, there's varied, um, there's, uh, varied businesses there. So if you recall, um, about a year and a half ago, I came in, um, on behalf of Manhattan Realty with respect to the issue of parking requirements for Jam Time. And Jam Time wanted to, uh, come in and be a tenant and some extra space there, uh, some empty space. They, um, I guess I would describe them as sort of a, a play area, um, commercial play area, commercial recreation, uh, for young children. And, um, as far as I understand, it's been very successful there. But the question that came up was when you look at the bylaw, the, um, the bylaws parking requirements are tied to the particular uses on a site. And if you took the number of, um, parking spots that would be required for Jam Time, which had an occupancy potential of one hundred, uh, you'd have to have a certain number of spaces that we just didn't have. Uh, the pizza shop had a, a question recently that got resolved with the building department about whether they had adequate parking for the, um, there, because they had a couple of tables they wanted to put in there. And that, that did get resolved. Um, the bank needs so many spaces based upon the use. Uh, the, uh, grocery store needs so many. The difficulty that arises in this type of situation is, um, we're not talking about an isolated building with one type of use, say an office building. You can take an office building and you can figure out how many spaces you need based upon the square footage. With a collection of stores such as this that has, um, that, that have different types of clientele, have different types of, um, services they provide, have different peak times, um, the, the need for the parking is not really governed by the strict requirements of the bylaw, there is covered by, or governed by the demand. When we met with you on Jam Time, we described how the busy times for Jam Time were late morning to lunchtime and then a couple of hours in the afternoon. At the same time, the pizza shop and the sandwich shop, Subway, they're busy at lunchtime and, excuse me, particularly at, um, the pizza shop, I think in the evening hours, that's their busy time. So there is not so much an overlap, but a separation of the needs. We now have about sixty-four hundred square feet of empty space and we hope to find tenants. We may have a tenant for a part of that space, uh, but one of the difficulties that we keep finding, and this relates to something we did, uh, we mentioned the Norwood Space Center a little while ago, we had a similar situation at the Norwood Space Center a couple of years ago. If we say to a prospective tenant, "We'd be happy to take you just as soon as we get a special permit from the zoning board because we may need some help on the traffic count, on the, uh, parking count," the three or four months it takes to get a special permit is enough time for the prospective tenant to decide they can't wait and they're gonna go somewhere else. So what we're asking for now is the board to make some determination that the spaces that we have and the plan that we have filed with you counts them out, um, as, I didn't get the exact number because it's, uh, you have it, I think, Steve?
Yeah.
We have, um, a Norwood engineering did the count for us. We have a hundred and thirty total spaces that we can apply to this site. If we look at the, if we added up every possible use and all the square footage and all those considerations, we'd be short maybe twenty or so spaces, somewhere in that, a hundred and fifty odd spaces would be needed. We don't believe, based on experience, based on the uses we have, that we need a hundred and fifty spaces. You go in there almost any time of day, you won't have any real difficulty finding a spot. I was over there last week going to Blue Hills Bank. I drove in, drove around, oh, it looks pretty full, and then I came around another bend and, but ten or so spaces open, middle of the day. So we're asking the board to look at this and to make a determination that within certain parameters, um, we have adequate space. Now let me speak to the empty space. The empty space that we have, about sixty-four hundred square feet, we believe that Shiva Bazaar wants to expand into, uh, about forty-five hundred.
Forty-five hundred.
Forty-five hundred of those square feet.
They wanna take the Blue Hill?
No, no. Going the other way. It's the Rugged Bear space, I think it is, isn't it?
Yes.
Part of the Rugged Bear space. They want to expand. Now, they want to expand not because they're so much trying to increase the number of people showing up there. They want to expand because they want to be able to offer their existing customers meat, something that they can't do now.
Offer them what?
Meat, meat products.
Wow.
And, and, and in particulars, I understand that they want to be able to offer meat that is the Muslim equivalent of kosher. And I believe it's called halal. And I maybe speak the wrong.
Why can't they do that? No.
You need more space to do it.
That was going to be my question. Why do I need the space?
They need the space to do that. Right now, their customers, and Steve can speak to this more than I can, but as I understand it, their customers who come and do their grocery shopping, their dry goods, produce and so forth, very happy to go there. But they have to drive to Brighton or Cambridge to go to the type of store that has the religiously acceptable meat that some Muslims are, in the same way that some Jewish people eat only kosher foods. So...
Those are the closest locations.
So, what, you're lacking space for refrigeration and stuff?
They need space for refrigeration and storage and to have a, an area for butchers to do their work. It's not adding a lot to the space, the retail space that the customers are going to walk around in. They don't expect that they're, they're not doing this to so much get more customers as to serve the customers they have so they don't have to drive over to Brighton or Cambridge where there are a couple of those stores now. And so...
So, who'd use any extra space? Not, not, you're not talking about customers using the extra?
Most, no, the space would be used for storage, refrigeration, a little bit for dressing rooms. And also, the butchers themselves have to have, set up their own counters to work behind the scenes. You go into any store that sells meat, they've got behind the glass there, the butchers are doing their work. Right now, they don't have those.
This is the tenant you're talking about that you're getting?
This is the existing tenant, wants to expand into that.
So, that was the tenant that you fictitious tenant that you said that you might have?
Well, we haven't signed a deal, but that's what we're talking with them about that.
That's the one you're referring to.
Yeah. As to the, the other space that's available, was formerly occupied by edible arrangements. And they left there. And we expect that would probably be a service-oriented or retail-oriented tenant that would go in there. Not another restaurant. And restaurants have, I think, generally greater requirements. But it wouldn't be fair, really, to the existing restaurant tenants there to add another restaurant. And that's not what the landlord wants to do. They would have service or retail there. Now, we're, you know, we've occupied, we, we've, my clients have owned this property for a number of years. They formerly were located there, operating a different type of business many years ago. And then they turned this into a retail collection of stores. And along the way, it's been full, with full occupancy. Yet, and Steve can speak to this, no problems with respect to traffic, parking or anything like that. That reflects the reality that certain stores are busy at certain times and others are at other times. And so, the spaces, if you come and do something there in the morning, you're out of there in the afternoon or evening when your neighbor may, may show up to do something. So, we don't need to provide all the parking. We'd like the Board to make a determination. I suppose Mr. Riley would, might remember it as a declaratory judgment of sorts, or something like that, that a declaration that the, that if the, depending upon the uses, that the parking we have there, based on experience, based on the types of uses we have and anticipate we'd have, is adequate. Now, I referenced the Norwood Space Center. You may remember that a few, a couple of years ago, we came in and we, the Board approved an arrangement where, without having to come back, every time they got a new retail tenant or a new food manufacturing tenant, we could use up to X square feet, provided we notified the Board of what type of tenant was coming in. And the Board agreed that if it had an objection, that objection would be lodged through the Secretary within a week or two weeks, and we'd have to come in for a discussion. And if no, if a certain minimum requirement of the Board didn't have an objection, or didn't think the prospective tenant was going to be a problem, then we could go forward after that time had expired. And that way, we weren't having to turn away tenants by saying to them, "Retail and manufacturing zone requires a special permit. We'll hopefully get one for you in three or four months." At which point you lose them. So, something like that might work.
What, what happens if, you're looking for a declaratory declaration of what?
I'm, I'm looking for the Board to determine that what we have is adequate for the uses we have in the intended use.
Okay. Let me play the devil's advocate. You're at full occupancy. You give Shiva 4,500 more square feet.
Yeah.
They become a thriving success. You put in David Hearn Nail Salon, and he booms. And now Lennox Street is an unabashed mess. And they're spilling into the Star Market parking lot. And it's becoming a problem. What is the, what is the recourse for the Board?
You always have the right to modify your decisions and your permits if a problem arises.
So, what do we go back and say, "Shiva, close your door"?
No. They might come back and tell us to make some other arrangement, I suppose.
What is that arrangement? That's where I'm heading, because you know Lennox is opening up. I've been down there when Jam Time is busy. They're on Lennox Street.
Yeah.
It's busy.
Yeah. It looks busy now, in part, because of the construction going on at the end of the street.
I understand, but I'm saying, what if?
Those people are parking in front of our properties.
Again, I don't want the finger pointed at this Board that we created a madhouse at the intersection of Lennox and Manhattan. You know, again, as Mr. Miller said, they've got to go to Brighton. They've got to go to wherever for the halal meat. All of a sudden, now, there's all these cars going in there on the weekend, and it's a traffic jam getting in and out of there, and I can't get my chicken upon the market.
Well, I think, I think, Mr. Chairman, one of the things you can consider is the fact that, for all the years, that this collection of businesses has been there. It hasn't really created parking or traffic problems. Blockbuster used to be there.
I'm playing the what-if game, David. The finger's going to come at us, not you. So, then what happens if it does happen? And then all hell breaks loose down there? You're telling us that we can always amend our decision. What is that amendment? Can you yank the permit?
Well, let me put it another way. You could do that, I suppose. You could call us in and, and consider, vote to modify the permit in some way. I understand your concern. I don't know that it's going to happen that way, but I understand it.
I don't either.
But if, if we look at what we did at Norwood Space Center, which was a, I think, a very good approach, a very good compromise, and we worked that out, the language, I probably worked out with Town Council. And I took a look at that decision this afternoon and have some of that language, draft language, I think I put in this file. But an idea of giving the Board notice. If you said, "Well, we can do what we plan to do with the space that the grocery wants to expand in, and then I don't know whether we have to come back," or, or maybe notify you what the, and we don't have any prospects right now for, at the moment, for the edible.
No, we do not.
We checked that this afternoon. But it's, the difficulty is that you have problems attracting tenants if you have to tell them to wait.
I'm all for them thriving. I am. And I don't want to rain on anybody's parade, because I think it's a great idea. And I, you know, I'll do it. But again, I'd, I'd like a parachute for this Board to say, "Listen, don't be surprised if there's, if there's, there's queuing up in that parking lot, which is so tight. And they start coming queued out onto Lennox and Manhattan at the light, and then the safety officer calls saying, 'You got issues. They double parked on Lennox Street, blah, blah, blah.'" I'm not saying that's going to happen. But again, I don't want the finger in my face saying, "What did you guys do?"
I, I, I understand that. I appreciate that. But, but we're faced with a situation where we know that the different businesses have different peak times, and that therefore, our experience has been that we're not, we haven't got to know before we park.
I've made my point. It's on, it's on the minutes. So, good. Anybody else? Jack?
Well, the other thing is...
Mr. Miller, I'm sorry.
I, I, I've been doing this for the Swan family for over 25 years. And we went a decade or more with full occupancy. Never was there a problem with the parking. And the other thing, too, is, is in this number here, we don't consider the parking in the street either, which now is being taken up by the contractors, which is understood. I mean, they have no place to park there either, but...
You understand my point, though?
Oh, I absolutely do. Absolutely.
Mr. Perry, and then we'll go to Mr. Riley.
I'm coming from the same venue as Panaki. I mean, I'm very familiar with the site. But this would be the first time, I, I think, we've been asked to reduce parking. And it's based on the facilities that are there. And what if it changes in a year and you need more parking? Would they come back again now to change it, or would we make them conform, you know, to the new use?
They need more parking.
In other words, based on a different use.
Oh, I see.
We don't know it's going to last for years, or how long a period of time. I really, to me, I just can't imagine reducing parking requirements. The Shaw's Plaza is crazy already. And I know your Plaza's pretty busy, too. And I know there's still cars parked on the street. And then the request is for a particular tenant. That tenant could be gone in a couple of years. And then do you come back and do we grant it? I, I, I'm just against reducing the number required.
Mr. Chairman, you, you have reduced parking requirements many times in many different situations.
Yeah, new applications, though, correct?
A recognition of the reality of different properties.
But new applications, right? I can't recall, Jack. I don't think I sat here and existing.
Not in existing.
Like, I haven't sat here in Home Depot, said, "Get rid of some more spots," or, you know, or, you know.
I, I understand. You both have, you know, have voiced the concern. But I would urge consideration along the lines of what was done at Norwood Space Center in terms of, maybe the landlord notifies you, the Board, of what's coming in, what the anticipated use is. And everybody looks at it, and before we bring them in.
Well, that's my, that's my caution. That's where I'm like, okay, we say yes. I'm just playing a hypothetical. Shiva spends 150,000 on walk-ins and reconfigurations, 250 on reconfiguring. All of a sudden, you know what show starts down there. Lennox is backed up. The apartments are in. Shaw's is complaining because you're spilling over to Shaw's parking lot. People are walking across, going over there, and it just turns into a hornet nest. The finger points to us. We invoke our amendment criteria that we have in every decision, saying we can amend it. What do we come back to you, saying, "Sorry, Mr. Bazaar, you've got to remove two, a quarter of a million dollars' worth of refrigeration because you don't have the parking"? You're saying that that's what we're going to do?
I'm suggesting a different approach on some of this. I think you could, you could allow the expansion of the grocery store and maybe...
I'm not saying I don't want to either, but...
But I'm not saying, I'm not saying you don't want to, either. But I'm saying, I'm, I'm looking at how you dealt with this previously, where to avoid having a landlord have to come in with an ongoing business every time something changes on the site. And to recognize that the parking requirements for this particular property are excessive compared to the actual use.
I understand.
It was, whatever is there presumably was approved long ago for that building. So, we haven't changed the building. We're not increasing the square footage. Why is it, why is it deficient? Well, it's so tied into the types of uses. But the number of people on the site at, at any one time is also tied into the uses.
I understand.
I mean, look at the requirements for Jam Time. Jam Time, if you had 100 people, you'd need, I think, 50 spots. Well, consider who goes to Jam Time.
Oh, I understand.
Probably 50% to 75% aren't allowed to drive for another 10 or 12 years.
Mr. Riley? I understand, David.
What, what happens to what I guess would be the owner's obligation under the bylaw, under 611, where it says that off-street parking must be provided to service all increases in parking demand resulting from new construction, additions or change of use, or a use requiring more parking? It's running along the lines that the Chairman was talking about. And it sounds as though, if there is such an increase that he was referencing, under this section, you have an obligation to provide the parking to meet that demand. Are we relieving you from an obligation that you have under 611 by saying, "Here's the, here's the maximum that you have to go to"?
Yes, that's why we're asking for the special permit.
And, and, and the question would be, can we do that by special permit?
Yes, you can, because under the special permit language, you may give relief. All right, let me get that. You may authorize a deviation from any parking or loading requirement set forth in this section 6.1. That's, that's the language that gives you the authority. You did it, in a way, with Jam Time, when you recognized that the need for parking was less than what the bylaw says. Our bylaw requires so many spaces.
We've generally done that and granted that relief with specific reference to a particular applicant who had particular needs that we could obviously take a look at and see what they are. But now, you're asking us to wander off and say, "Okay, here's the total number, and you no longer have an obligation to provide the necessary service that might result from increased demand beyond X number that we've set out."
Well, I...
I mean, let's assume that we set the number at, what numbers are we talking about here? You have 130 total spaces. Or suppose we, we say, "Okay, 130 total spaces is, is the most you have to, you have to supply." And just assume, by way of a, of a hypothetical situation, that new construction, additions, change of use, et cetera, et cetera, referenced in the, in the, in the bylaw, would require, under the provisions of the bylaw, as to the particular uses, 150. Is that something we can do?
Yes, you can do it. It's up to you to decide whether you should, but yes, you can.
But it, but it's, you know, I, I, I think I have the same reservations that are being expressed by some of the other members that, as to whether we should, you know, make what sounds like little more than an educated guess as to what, what might be needed. Look, I understand that, you know, problems might ensue with, with new possible tenants and whether they're going to have space or not. But I'm not so sure that, you know, one suit fits all. Here, here's the whole deal. I, I don't know.
Mr. Chairman...
I have, I have some...
Go ahead, David.
Go ahead, David.
Well, I don't want to interrupt Mr. Riley, but, you know, the, the schedule of minimum requirements, I think, contemplates in part that, and the last one, other uses. A number of spaces to be determined by the inspector of buildings based upon evidence from similar uses under similar circumstances. What we're saying to you is, in all the years when they had full occupancy of that place, they didn't have a problem. Look at, you know, Blockbuster. When Blockbuster, when people used to go to a video store, the place was hopping. People go there on a Friday afternoon, a Friday evening, Saturday afternoon, Saturday evening, they'd be going there. They'd go there during the week. There was always somebody going in and out of there. Didn't have a problem with parking. And that's a very, you know, that's a short-term use, where people are in and out of there in 10 or 15 minutes. So, you almost need more parking without the short-term parking, the long-term. With respect to the grocery store, and I'd have to ask Mr. Miller on this, but do we look at it and say, "Well, look, we're telling you what the grocery store is." That, that's not a guess. We're telling you what space they want, what use they want, and, and whether you can at least approve that, and then we'll figure out what we do with the other empty space. I don't know, Steve. Is that, am I speaking out of turn on that?
No. Their, their comments to me were that a great deal of their, their customers come in, and they always say, "Gee, it's too bad. I have to drive to Brighton, to Cambridge, whatever." And that was the impetus behind them asking if they could move into the space that used to be the Rugged Bear. And, you know, the landlord is looking into that. And, but there again, we have the problem with the, with the parking. And my question to them was, do you expect an increase, a huge increase in business with people coming in to, to buy this meat? And they said that there would be an increase in business, but they didn't expect a huge increase in business.
What about getting rid of the other store?
What do you mean?
So, just rent out the 4,500 square feet, but that third store, that other vacancy?
Well, we hate to leave it vacant. That doesn't help, that actually doesn't help business, not just for my client, but for the other businesses there to have a vacant store.
Well, yeah, but again, at the, the, the bylaw is going to get tripped on.
What I'm saying is maybe, as sort of an in-between, if you can see your way to authorizing the occupancy of the former Rugged Bear space by the, by the grocery store, if in fact, we strike the deal with them, that you see a way to authorizing that and back off from my request for blanket relief, and we'll deal with that vacant space down the road sometime, based upon what use might turn up. I'd hate to, I'd hate...
Yeah. I think that's the problem. I mean, how, how do we determine the adequacy of the provisions?
Well, then, no, we come back to...
I mean, what they, what the, what the bylaw says is that the number of spaces indicated in the section shall be the basis for determining the adequacy of provisions. So, what do we do? Just add up the numbers that are, that are in the, in the bylaw and say, "Okay." We look at the various uses that you have there, and we add up the provisions for each of those uses, and we say, "Okay, that's the basis for the determination of adequacy of provisions." But if we don't know who the tenants are and what the requirements are, what are we doing? Are we just guessing at what the adequacy is? And is, are we going to guess wrong? Are we, I mean, I, I, I just have the feeling that, you know, we're, we're, we're being asked, it seems to me, to set a limit on the parking here without very much by way of a, a solid ground of determining what the number is that would be the adequate number to service the anticipated needs. I, I, other than guessing, I don't see how we do it.
I can tell you what the bylaw requires.
What does the bylaw, well, the bylaw has a whole bunch of requirements.
Well, right.
What's the number?
If we filled all the vacancies, including all the, the retail uses we have, but excluding the vacant spaces, we'd need 91 spaces for retail. We would need one space for storage use by the grocery store. The restaurants, Subway requires, would require 14 spaces. That's based upon seats plus counter positions. Boston Market, 12 spaces. Same old place, the pizza shop, nine spaces. And then the Jam Time, you determined that what we had, we, we were okay with respect to Jam Time. But when it was anytime fitness, I'm sorry, anytime fitness, rather, requires 14... What we had, we, we were okay with respect to jam time, but when it was anytime fitness, I'm sorry, anytime fitness rather requires fourteen. Jam time, I, I'm not including in the total, cause you determined that, we showed that the times that that's, use those spaces are empty. But we were up to parking spaces required based on current uses, a hundred and forty-one. We've got a hundred and thirty.
So you're already over.
Yes, we are. And you determined that we're, it was okay for us to be over because of the peak times. If you look at the peak times. Um, there are times, uh, and this was a chart somebody in the company had put together, that they don't overlap that much. Uh, there are some busy times, somebody's busy all the time.
What's gonna go in the bank? Blue Hill, Blue Hills is leaving.
Probably a bank.
Probably?
No, we're, we're talking to.
And how many do they need?
This is.
Is that, was that in your one forty-one?
That's a, yeah, I, I included that. Cause that was, that's occupied space.
Yeah.
I did, I did this calculation a while ago, but a couple of months ago, but the thing is, Mr. Chairman, um. You know, you approved, somebody approved at some point, the construction of this property with all these spaces. And all these different uses. Presumably, they knew that there would be food, you know, restaurants, there'd be retail, there'd be this, there'd be that. And said, it's okay, you've got your certificate of occupancy. To say now that we have to start leaving space vacant, it'd be different if we were building.
Yeah, but you also have to say too, that you've modified the plaza too. You, you knocked the wall down with two.
We didn't modify a plaza. We're not creating any new space.
You've knocked walls down to incorporate bigger spaces, haven't you, in some of the buildings, some of the units, rather?
If it's a thousand feet here and a thousand feet there and we knock down the wall, we still only have two thousand feet.
But I mean, as far as tenants go, their needs.
Well, then we lost a tenant that had a thousand feet and some, that somebody else now occupies it, using it maybe to expand their need. I mean, the thing is, we're not creating new space. This is not.
Yeah, but the problem is you're not creating any more new parking.
The question is whether we need new parking considering the uses.
The bylaws do.
But, but if you have, if you need, if you need a hundred and forty-one spaces now. And you only have a hundred and thirty, you're already over what you need. So why, so why should we say, well, we'll, we'll put a cap at one twenty-five? When obviously that's inadequate and doesn't, and doesn't, I'm just picking a number out of the air. I mean. We, we pick out a number that's less than what's already there. How is that going to help things? You, you, you're gonna create a problem down there.
We're not, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, uh, the proof is in the pudding. That with, with a hundred and forty, with a hundred and thirty spaces, regardless of what the bylaw says, we don't have a lack of parking. We don't have people out on the street. We don't have people parking across the street. We have empty spaces. If you go down.
But how do we guess that that's gonna continue?
Because Mr. Miller has told you that even when the place was fully occupied, they didn't have a parking problem. So the proof is in the experience, not in some artificial list that is in the bylaw. That has, I've said for years, requires too much parking on all our properties.
All right, well, let's, let's keep this pushing forward here, cause we're gonna beat this all night. Anything further from the board? Seeing none, I'll open it up to the audience. Anybody wanna be heard on case nineteen oh nine? One eleven Lennox Street parking plan, parking request. Anybody once, twice? What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it if you wanna continue this, uh, because I think we can, uh, perhaps give the board some more information. Um, uh, and also we may have developments with respect to prospective tenants that might enter into your consideration.
The seventh is already full, right, Ramona? So we'd have to go to the sixteenth of May.
Well, does that do, is that all right?
It's fine.
Uh, the seventh?
Seven's full, but we'll go to the sixteenth at seven fifteen P M.
Sixteenth?
Yep. What are you looking at her for? I got the thing right here.
I know, but I trust her.
Why? Cause you told me I was wrong before?
No, I didn't tell you that. Um, the seventh would be two weeks later?
Right.
Yeah, then he corrected himself.
Oh, did he?
Yeah.
May seventh is a Tuesday. Two Tuesdays after that would be the twenty-first.
Well, I'm going on what's here.
Can't be a May sixteenth. You've got town meeting.
So then I, listen.
Can we possibly do the seventh, cause I'm having an eye operation the twenty-first.
You wanna start at, well, we have a seven start? And then what, we have seven fifteen, seven thirty?
Seven thirty, seven forty-five, eight.
I'm already here, seven forty-five, or whatever time zone that is.
Yeah, um. I don't know, what, what do you guys wanna do? You wanna do six forty-five?
I'll do any time, just to.
Tom, Jack?
I'm fine with whatever.
I can do it or go for, you know what?
Make a decision.
Six forty-five. Okay, David?
On the seventh?
On the seventh. Motion to continue to six forty-five and May seventh. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second, uh, motion, may, may Mr. Perry, second, may Mr. Brady, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Thank you.
See you on the seventh at six forty-five. Thank you.
All right.
All right.
That's somebody else's. You might run it.
And then you're coming back for the, uh, plan. Thanks, Mr. Miller.
You're entirely welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Jeff.
Okay, so we've got, uh, sixty-one Endicott Street, case nineteen-ten. Okay, May twenty. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Hello there.
Good evening. And well in yourselves?
Good, good, good. No, I understand. I understand. I understand. I understand. That is a big hypothetical. I didn't wanna play. Uh, my lady, if I could have your advertisement and, uh, your affidavit, please.
Got it.
Thank you, my dear. David, Mrs. Anderson and Mr. Perry will be looking for. Um, the twenty-first of March and April fourth, please.
Hi, April fourth.
I have March twenty-eighth.
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Is that the date you gave me?
March twenty-eighth and April fourth.
Yes.
That's it. Thank you. The advertisements have been attested by members Anderson and Perry that the, uh, twenty-eighth of March and April fourth are in order. The affidavit is in order. Let me read the public notice and then I'll give you the floor and you can present your case, okay? The notice is hereby given to the Board of Appeal. The town in order will hold a public hearing in room twelve with the municipal office building on April sixteenth at two thou, uh, two thousand nineteen at eight P M. On the request of Corinne Magno, uh, case number nineteen-ten with respect to property located at sixty-one Endicott Street in Manufacturing District. The application requests a special permit under section three point one point five of the zoning bylaw to allow Magno Capelli. A twelve-hundred square foot high-end beauty salon employing four, maybe five service providers. Magno Capelli requests to be open and available to cater to their vast diverse demographic seven days of the week. Throughout the services, including but not limited to haircuts, hair coloring, shaves, hairstyling, highlights, straightening, hair removal, extensions, special occasions, up and down, dew. Manicure, pedicures, facials, massage-related services located in building number zero to occupy the entire twelve-hundred square foot. Uh, envelope. Plans are on file with the application in the office of the zoning board of appeal. They view normal, normal working hours, Monday through Thursday, eight P M to four P M. All the statutory requirements having been met, I hereby declare the hearing open for the applicant, your name and who you are and the floor is yours.
Absolutely, thank you. My name is Corinne Magno and I would be the owner of Magno Capelli. It is a high-end, thank you. A high-end boutique salon and it provides, including but not limiting, hairstyling, skincare. Manicures, pedicures, massage. We do and would like to ask for permission to be open in Norwood. To service the community and surrounding areas seven days of the week. Given the types of services that we do provide in the facility. We feel that the hours will best accommodate the schedule for our clientele and allow Magno Capelli to thrive. Also, we inspire to give back to the community by hosting events and raising awareness to foundations, charities. As well as collaborating with other local businesses and professionals to empower the members of our, of our community. We intend, we intend to do this by, whether it's doing headshots, professional headshots. Doing anything with our work and our brand that can bring awareness to any of our charities that we do choose for the future going forward. Um, because we have the ability to touch people's lives and make it better.
That it?
Yep.
Okay. Um, how long have you been in, uh, are you in business now?
I am.
Where are you?
I am in Foxborough.
Uh, one salon? Is it just one shop that you have? Do you have two?
One.
And have you owned, is, do you own that one in Foxborough?
I do.
Yeah. And, um, are you seven days a week over there?
We have the ability to be there seven days a week, yes.
The ability, but are you operating at seven days a week?
I, I have, yes. I have someone there that's the days that I'm not there. So yes, we are fully operating seven days a week.
So you got four or five people there on a Sunday?
I have two. I have two, yeah.
So, um.
When I'm not there, they're there.
Somewhat familiar with the beauty business. Now, Saturday's a big day, obviously. Um, lot of nights. Uh, with professionals that can't go during the day.
Correct.
Is Sunday a necessity?
Um, it's not a necessity, however, in my experience working at Gillette Stadium, that was one of our highest-powered days because a lot of families go out. They, they kind of are more relaxed. They'll wanna say, hey, let's go get our hair done with one of their children, their sons. Let's go get a blow dryer, let's get a manicure. It's kind of a relaxed day, so yes, Saturday's a high-powered day, but Sunday can be as well because people are most likely off on those days. So they utilize that.
Where are you in Foxborough?
So I'm in the center of Foxborough. I was at Gillette for seven years. Opened up my own business in the center of Central Street, forty-four Central Street. Um, and that I've been open at for three years.
What took you down to the, um, to the Zimbalts? I called Zimbalts, I'm sorry.
No, Win, Winsmith Mill. A lot of my clientele is a little bit closer into the Boston area, a lot more centrally located in Norwood. So it was kind of a little bit better for me to accommodate my clientele. Not only that, I love the diversity of, of Norwood. I feel that we could make a huge impact in the community, um, let alone being able to work with a diverse, um, community. Norwood also has a lot of character and I feel like we could bring a lot more to the table with that character, work well with the character. And I, I was looking for something to expand in and work and collaborate with a lot of the professionals in the area.
As far as the space though, I mean, what about any of the, like, the retail spaces on the main roads? And what I'm getting at is. This property cut through a residential district to get to it. And so it's not like the center of Foxborough or Gillette.
Absolutely.
So, um, what I'm getting to is that Sunday might be an issue for me. We're not, we're not trying to.
No, I understand. No, I totally understand.
Again, it's, um, we've had this debate with the developers down there, the owners of the place, and it is fully, almost fully occupied, if not fully occupied down there. And we've got issues with parking and traffic flow and what have you. And again, the neighbors are very sensitive to the, the growth and what's going on down there. So I'm wondering if you could, uh, tell us that Su, Sunday might have some flexibility and.
I, I definitely am open to flexibility. I am. We just wanna be able to give, whether this, the service providers, the ability to have that flexibility. Whether they have families, children and their schedules, so on. So I understand that and I understand, obviously, the community's concerns as well.
Do you have regular hours of operation? Would it be?
We typically, um, start around nine, ten in the morning. Um, we would love to, um, consider that the business would be. Open possibly in the future, expand our hours to maybe about eight P M. If that's the case, like you said, there's a lot of professionals that aren't able to make it during those business hours. We tend to fill up the nights very quickly, just because we can't cater to a lot of the professionals that are working till five o'clock. So I feel like those days are really kind of something a little bit towards eight o'clock is what we're hoping.
How big is the space? It's twelve?
A thousand two hundred square feet, yeah.
Does one level?
One level.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Our resident expert on the Endicott property.
Well, I can't say that I'm an expert, but I've spent a great deal of time there and I have many, many concerns. I've been in the morning, I've been there at night. I spent probably three hours there on Saturday. I do not think the area is safe for the traffic flow. Uh, the, the lighting that is supposed to be so bright is not. Uh, the parking, where your particular area is, would totally fall. So if you have five people or four people. We have to assume there's a minimum of four cars that being turned over, maybe it's gonna be two or three hours or maybe a half hour. So I don't think there is adequate parking and especially on the weekends with the traffic. There's no signage to one way or, I just do not see this as a retail space.
I totally understand.
And then if you open it up, which I personally have no control of, but what about the people that are there three days a week? Are they gonna be over seven days a week and then that would be an additional problem?
I understand.
So the Mary's point here, you're at building zero and what is, what is, uh, the Karma Center giving you for pu, spots?
So I have five parking spots around the building on the side, three in the front. And we also have additional parking right here. I can actually show you.
I can guarantee that parking?
Yeah. So in this exhibit right here, I'm grabbing for you, is what we're showing.
So currently, they're not there. They're not, they're not painted?
Um, yes, they are.
They are?
Yeah.
Oh, hi, Daniel.
So. They're here to assist as well. So this would be the building that we're speaking of, the three parking spots in the front. Your additional on the side are all designated to my space. And then this is all the extra. That would be twenty-one total in parking. Which I don't foresee seeing a problem if there's only three stylists on and let's say each person has a client in their chair, that's six.
I, I appreciate that, but. I don't know how you're going to get that with all the needs for the parking for everyone else. So I fear that people would be packing.
Overage would be kind of taking over. Of course, of course. Um, we do have plenty of parking.
That is very, very dark and scary.
Well, I hope there's nothing out there that's scary. Cause then that would be obviously not something.
It's more of a safe.
Of course. Um, I do understand your concern, um, whether it's just about being lit, well-lit. Um, but we do have plenty of spaces as far as what we've been working on as a collaborative, is making sure these spaces are. Designated to all these providers in the building, making sure that there's plenty of signage. So people do have a little clear, concise ability to see where they need to go, especially the one ways. And just being able to just have more direction in that area. It would be helpful, even if the customers had more direction too.
Well, I just noted the space out backwards for another client. And there are all kinds of no parking space signs, but they're filled. They're not paying one bit of attention to the no parking signs. I think Mr. Riley observed that also one Saturday afternoon.
Anytime that I've been down there, the spaces that you've referenced, both in front of the building. Along the side of the building where you've designated them, as well as the places across the area have all been full. How many people do you have, uh, by way of employees that you would expect to be at this place?
So max probably would be five, including myself.
Five?
Yes. And at the moment, right now, I have three. So that would be the maximum.
Where would, now, presumably you and the other four people would have to get to the site. Where would your cars be put?
On the side so that they would still be parking in the front in a nice clear, um, pathway when they come in.
When you say on the side.
Yeah. Yeah, and there's a little more space at that point, like it opens up.
When you're talking about the side, are you talking about these spaces in front of the place?
So we have side sp, spaces right here and then you also have.
I understand. I, I've been to the area, I know what it looks like. Are you talking about these spaces here for your employees to park in?
I would say these two, since there's plenty enough space on.
But you said there's gonna be four or five people, and they all come with a car.
There's three in the front. So they're, they're, they're stable there all day long. Let's say they're parked there.
I understand there are three in the front, so if you have parking there, are you gonna have other people parked along here on the side?
Yes.
So those spaces are obviously not available for your customers. How many, how many customers do you have to have in the store to get a job?
Three stylists on, there would be three, there're cle, at least three clients in the chair.
Well, if you, you have five employees.
And most likely five are not gonna be on at the same time.
I'm sorry, and you'd have how many five customers?
It would be equivalent usually, but it would be equivalent to how many stylists. However, we are not foreseeing to have five on at the same time. It's more of a rotating schedule. So maximum five would be employed there, but most likely three at a time. Yep.
Mostly three at a time?
Yes. So that would, that would include their clients plus themselves, six parking spots.
And, uh, what, what, how does the turnover operate? How long would most of the clients be there?
An hour. Um, let's say something a little bit further or advanced, a color and a cut, an hour and a half, two hours. Men's haircut, maybe thirty minutes.
And then of course, if you have massages and the like, that's gonna take.
Maybe an hour.
Longer?
Yep.
So the, uh.
Turnaround would probably be, let's say, an average, an hour, an hour and a half.
Hour to an hour and a half.
Yes.
Go ahead, Mary.
All right, I have spent a number of times at Beauty Palace, and I always, I will get there at ten o'clock. But my beautician is not ready for me at ten. So now we have two cars parked there, the one that's in the seat and the one that's waiting. And if you have three, and I never see that it doesn't work that way, that you, one's going out the doors, the other one's coming in the same empty space. So I'm, I totally am concerned about that, and I'm also concerned about your parking on the side.
This one?
Yes, you were on the side and across from you, there are also cars on the side. Now, when I was trying to move forward, there were cars coming down. There wasn't room for both of us.
Okay. So you felt that it was too tight of an, of a pathway?
I do, I do. And I am for business.
Oh, absolutely. I know, I think it's more coming from a concern as far as flow of everything, and I understand.
The whole thing has been safety for me.
And you don't want anyone's car or anybody crossing, and I totally understand that.
No, and I just don't really think that the spaces that you've designated are, are gonna work for you because of the fact of the people coming in and out.
So we're hoping it's gonna be, obviously, not an out situation. We're gonna only be an in, it's a one-way.
No, no, I mean, the people.
Parking spots.
Coming, I'm coming in. Somebody is coming out at the same time, so I say, wait a minute, you can have my space. Oftentimes, that one person, you need two spaces for them because someone else is either late or there early.
I get what you're saying. I get what you're saying.
Diane, what's in the building now? Isn't that the office, the manager's office?
It's empty.
It's empty?
It's empty. And just to remind you, the, the flow of traffic going in front of the building is gonna be turned into one-way, so we're not gonna have cars going both ways in front of the building, which is gonna be. That's part of the plan that we submitted.
So they're, they, they've been allocated with signage like the other feller in the back with the gym? They're gonna have, they're gonna have signs only for Capella?
Again, we talked about this a couple of weeks ago too. I don't know how enforceable it is.
Well, I'm sorry, it really isn't. Plus the fact.
But we're gonna do our best to try.
When you come around from the back, you're supposed to take a right turn because it's one-way coming in in front of those shops. The sign is a paper sign on a barrel, turned the wrong way. So I, I was there, you're shaking your head.
It's all gonna change is what I'm saying. We're, we're in the process of that.
But in, in order for us field to go along with it, I think we need to see that these things are gonna be done.
I understand that too. Part of the reason why we're here tonight as well is because it ties into what we were here a couple of weeks ago for.
Right.
Is, and we know that there was still some questions, so we are putting together more information to bring to the board. Um, the engineer has a plan with all of the signage on it, so we'll give you a copy of that. Um, we have a list of the, you know, the types of businesses that we have employees Mr. Perry asked for. Um, and the engineer is putting together a written parking report from her study. So we're just waiting for, for, for the details to come through on that, so we're hoping to get that to you in about a week.
Mr. Brady? I think I'm good for now. Mr. Perry?
I just have the same concerns I had last time. It, it's like a crazy place. It really is. And I know it well. I worked there as a kid. And now it's turned into a very successful park, business park, but there's no direction down there. The parking is horrendous, and I, I brought up the fact that I would like to know who's even in there. I mean, there's so many companies in there, and I asked if a directory could be put together. And it's almost now it's running out of control down there. And I'd like, I'd like to see that go, but like I said, it, right now, I think it's growing faster. And we're not being, providing enough information, and I think parking should be designated too, cause there are separate lots down there. But right now, it's, it's the wild west.
I think as Jack's pointing out, it, it, it is horrendous, and part of the problem, I think, is that there's all kinds of different uses going on.
Exactly.
I mean, I went down there, there's a, uh, there's a guy down there who was, uh, repairing and fixing up Jaguars. There's a place that has a, uh, that restores masonry trucks. There are machinists, there are people doing carpentry work. I mean, there's all kinds of this sort of thing going on. And I'm not sure how well, I'm not sure how well this mixes with a, with a retail operation. And I think there's also a concern that I think the chair mentioned, or someone mentioned, that, uh, I mean, we, we had approved some, some craft businesses down there, working on a, uh, two or three or four-day weekend, uh, operation. And presumably, if they find out there's a seven-day, uh, business going on, they're gonna become an insect. How about us? Why don't we stay open seven days? I mean, I, I think that, that, that there needs to be, this may be what Jack's driving, I don't know. I think that there needs to be some kind of a plan as to what's going on down there. I mean, uh, are, are, are these businesses going to be, uh, and, and the buildings, which in particular, are they going to be upgraded? Are they going to be, uh, uh, I don't know, have more sidewalks put in? I mean, are things going to be done to make this more amenable as a retail area? Or is it going to continue to be largely a manufacturing area?
I assume that a lot of these.
I assume a lot of these people have leases that may, I don't know, who knows how long they're.
There may be several zones down there.
Yeah, yeah, and I.
Some uses aren't allowable.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm not too sure how, how they mix.
I know.
Yeah, because again, it is a manufacturing district, you know, so.
It is, it is. It's not a retail district.
I know. So, I mean, well, let, let me hear from the audience. Um, anything further from the board? Um, seeing them will open up to the audience. Anybody wanna be heard? Miss Yosko?
Um, I appreciate the time. Tony Yosko, I live on fourteen Endicott Street, and I've worked on Endicott Street for thirty-seven years. And when we moved there, the end of the street was just the most horrific lighting area. There's nothing more I'd like to see than the Norwood Commerce Center to be successful, and I truly need that. I know we cannot confiscate the property owner's right to use their property, but nor can my satisfaction enjoy their mind property to be confiscated with either. So I'm, I'm asking for the, for the board's, um, you know, strong consideration of all the, the needs of the neighborhood, which have also changed dramatically, as you know from the letter I sent you. It used to be, you know, just the ten houses on Endicott Street, back in the eighties or whatever, the apartment house turned condo at the top of the street. You've got the hundred twelve condos being built at the end of the street. Also adding to the, the mix on the town meeting warrant, the CPA with their money wants to put a pavilion on the conservation lane across the street from me, from my house, with six parking spaces, one for our handicapped accessibility, and a concrete path up to the pavilion. So now there'll, there'll be some, so that there'll be some shade on that sunny land there. So now we're gonna have, you know, people stopping there to try and enjoy, say, this pocket park at the, near the top of Endicott Street. The main thing that is, it could, there's two really big considerations. One is traffic. Absolutely, traffic is one of them. Uh, actually, there's more, more than two. The third one is, is to, to have some time of the week where one can enjoy being in, in a, in a house. There's not a time of day that is, I'm not looking for noise-free. We're never noise-free. I'm not asking for that. But to have a seven-day operation does concern me for the very reason you said, and I know it because I'm down there a lot, and the craft people and the antique dealers, they'll be on it. I know, I know, I, I know, going to salons myself, they sell products too. They have, they sell their signature product or hairbrushes sometimes, they have jewelry and so. You know, they have, they have other stuff they sell too. Why, why can the craft shops only be open, you know, three days? It, it opens up a Pandora's box that's about fantasy, I think. So the traffic, the lighting, all of that. Also, I think more attention needs to be, to be, uh, taken for the, on a conservation point in terms of protection of the book that has been so disgracefully unprotected. I understand it was a commercial site and a mill, but we have laws now that should be paying attention to the book. And I, I don't feel that the tenants sometimes give enough respect to the area because it looks like an old mill. They treat it like a dumpy old mill, and I'd like to see us raise the bar on the renter's attitude towards the property. You are on the middle of a residential district that's growing by leaps and bounds with the condos being built. And we have a lot of, we're, believe it or not, there's more kids than you think down there. I know. So, uh, one of the things that was supposed to happen on our street when our condo development was finished, but it needs it sooner than later. We need better sidewalks with granite curving to delineate a safe sidewalk on that street. My other concern, and a salon is lovely, I'd love to see a salon around here. I have grave concerns about parking, especially since that's the beginning of the entrance to the Commerce Center, of cars spilling up, coming back up onto Endicott Street. It, it's, it would just be a nightmare. We have so many trucks on that street now. And to imagine cars on both, I can't, I can't, I just can't imagine it. When I first moved to Endicott Street, there was an overpass over the book and you could go onto Davis Avenue. It's closed off now. I know it's an extremely complicated conversation to have about who owns that, the impact of going over a book, but eventually, if the property owner's maximum use potential is to be, is to become evident, something will have to happen about the traffic down there. Whether or not you could open up an overpass over the book and go around up Davis the way you used to be able to, you could when we moved there. I, I don't know if that's possible, but, um, the other point that you just mentioned is, you know, it is a manufacturing zone. And it's not just a couple acres, it's twenty. And I, and I really do strongly believe that the town should take a proactive initiative, friendly-like with the property owners who are trying to do a good job. I think they are trying to do a good job, but they're in a very tough spot. So, but we as residents of Endicott Street live with great risk with a twenty-acre manufacturing lot at the end of our street. So, um, you know, when, when you, when you deliberate this, as I said before, it's, it's just this big jigsaw puzzle with a potential of great risk and dilemma, and I'm, I'm, I, I can't do anything else. We come here, we've sent letters, I've talked to Paul Alkiotis, I'm talking to you, I sent all the conservation commissioner about the book. Something needs to happen, please, to make it a safer space. I don't want anybody get hurt. You know, i- in the dock, you could just drive into the book. It is so docked there now that you could just drive up there and fall in the downwater. It's, it's, it's atrocious. And, you know, I sent you the other stuff, and, you know, the pictures of the mattresses were taken the day before your meeting. I told you that. And, you know, if you're in the moving business, college hunk, then you should have a place for your mattresses, don't you think, when you collect them and dispose them? How many mattresses will you gotta collect until we have a bonfire? No, I'm sorry. That's disrespecting the property, I feel. You can tell me I'm wrong, but I don't think that's right. An overflowing dumpster next to a book, that's not right either. And just because you're out of sight, let me tell you, it's not out of our mind. We, we, we live there, we respect our property, I respect my property value, the people who are spending almost a half a million dollars for the condos at the end of my street, which I can't believe is raising my assessment. But nevertheless, I don't want my values compromised either. I want Norwood Commerce Center to be successful. That's my emphasis here. They, they have a difficult situation with the manufacturing lot. I praise the people who bought it because it was, it was, it's horrible for it to be empty. The fire that we had down there a few years ago, which was technically considered Davis Ave, that straddled over the book. The cause of that fire, quote, human factor. An empty building, migrants go in there, they do their business or drug it. I don't want the place empty. I do want it rented. I do want it rented. But please, to have the place operating literally twenty-four-seven, seven days a week, is really tough for us to take.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you, Mrs.
I wanna elaborate on what you just said about the condition of it. If, in the back of the buildings at the bottom, it looks like the town dump. It's outside, I think, is it a, um, insulation company? Pile to the high, and a fire was also one of my concerns.
We've had several in the, in the long past, but.
Well, it's wide open for it now.
All right, so let's, let's just try and stay on the, the young lady's application here. Hi, Smithy, how are you?
I'm good.
Good to see you.
Jody Smith.
Good to see you, Jody.
Forty-seven Woodbine Road. How are you?
I'm well, thank you.
Um, I agree with Tony that the building being occupied is better than it being empty. Absolutely. No question. I would've been here for the CrossFit, um, hearing also, but I had an meeting that evening. So what I'm gonna say, I would've said for the CrossFit people too, so it's not, has nothing to do with the hair salon or anything like that. When they first started opening for, um, the antiques and the crafters and so forth, we were told and we were assured that this was going to be a weekend venture only. Nobody said this was gonna end up being seven days a week. Now, Endicott Street cannot handle that amount of traffic. It just, it wasn't built that way, it wasn't designed that way. Years ago down there, the trains used to come in, they'd take the materials, they'd move it into Boston. You'd have trucks that would go down there, there would be minimal traffic back and forth, Monday through Friday. That was it. I remember growing up, cause I used to ride my bike down there, and God help me, I used to skate on that bond. So, uh, yeah, that's another whole story.
Fell in, and that explains a lot.
That's another whole story. So, um, the concern is, I'm on Woodbine. We have noticed a great increase in traffic already. Trying to go out in the morning at the end of Endicott, I mean, at the end of Woodbine to take a right, there are days that I sit there for close to five to six minutes. People coming out of Endicott taking a right, they don't stop to let you go. So we were also told at one point, um, that there was gonna be another traffic light at the end of the street. So that didn't materialize along with the sidewalks. My big concern is the seven-day-a-week deal and things being open there even Monday through Friday. The, uh, I know that the, um, performance space is there, but they're not every night. They're there sporadically, and I agree with people on the board that have stated that if this is allowed seven days a week, the CrossFit is allowed seven days a week, then why aren't these crafters going to be afforded the same opportunity? Walking down there, going down there for a walk, you take your life in your hands because people come around the corner, it's a blind corner. I understand you're gonna be putting signage up, but you've had how, how long to put the signages up there? I mean, a little sign on a little barrel is not gonna do it. So I just ask that people really give good, solid thought as to how this is going to work and where the parking spaces are gonna be, cause you can have them designated all you want. People are gonna see it empty, they're gonna go in there, and they're gonna go into another shop. So.
Appreciate the comments. Valid. Anybody else? Y'all set her?
Jay Phelan, forty-seven Woodbine Road. I've lived there all my life, fifty-eight years. I, it's great to see everything going on down there, but my concern is Endicott Street. I go out every day. I used to go down there for a walk. I stopped walking down there because I was like, I'm not gonna get hit. I want you to make a great business. I want you to do well down there, but I'm sorry, seven days a week down there is just not appropriate.
Thanks, Jay. Uh, anybody else? Anybody from the board? Anybody?
Could I say that she has an.
That's right. That's right. Well done. Uh, Di?
Yeah, can I, just a couple of quick comments?
Sure.
I think for what we have to say, I, we have done, I just wanna reiterate, we've done the parking study. We're gonna provide you with further information. Um, we, we understand there's a traffic flow problem down there. We are trying to fix that by changing the, the flow of the traffic so that it's not, it's safe the, the, the property, the pedestrians, for, for the cars. Again, I think that, as you've seen, an Orwood Commerce Center is trying to, um, trying to do something with the property. And it doesn't happen overnight, as you've seen. It's been a slow process of trying to clean things up, upgrade things. We've put sprinkler systems in, we've cleaned out the brook, we've taken out tires and trash, and it's still trying to work on it. So having some new tenants, um, like the CrossFit and the salon, are again, trying to upgrade the property. Property can, as a matter of right, be used for, you know, the manufacturing industrial kinds of businesses that are down there. That's something that can win as a matter of right. We think these are a little bit more pleasant, they're a little more user-friendly. Reduces the number of trucks going up and down the street and in and out of the park. So I just wanna add that. And I think that the condos have added the traffic to Endicott Street, you know, I, I know that the center has, but the condos have as well. I, I also think that the, the, the antique Winsmith Mill. I, I also think that the, the antique Winsmith Mill business is, is been operating for a couple of years now on the weekend schedule. So nobody is looking to change that at this point in time. Everybody's very happy with that schedule. Um, a lot of the folks that work down there have other businesses or other, um, employment opportunities. And so they're not able to do that seven days a week, and that's not something that they're looking to do. So I just wanna throw that out there.
Thanks, Diane. When are you gonna be back in front of us, do you, uh, expect?
We are, we, how scared it was for May seventh?
May seventh.
Um, and like I said, I'm hoping to get you some further information in the next week.
Do you have anything further to add, dear?
I do not.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
So what we'll do is, uh, we'll take this under advisement and then, um, or do we wanna, uh, continue it or close it?
Why don't we continue it to May seventh so that we have the two cases at the same night? I know we got a lot of stuff going on.
So, uh, who could join these? Uh, the Endicott cases?
Yeah, well, I, I, not, but I, I wouldn't formally consolidate them as you might in a legal sense, but I mean.
Seven-ten?
Have them both on at the same.
So it'll be seven-ten, and then, uh, what's the other one, seven-fifteen?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, yeah.
May I make an interjection?
Sure.
I am actually not here at that time, I am out of the state.
Okay.
Is there anything after, like, the twentieth that would be available for me to?
Um.
If possible.
What is our, what?
If I'm here on May, so it'll be June fourth.
June fourth? Does that work for you, June fourth?
It will have to.
Oh, yeah, June fourth. Okay.
I know.
June fourth?
It's not even the twenty-first.
I told you.
Uh, is, is June gonna work?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Is that a misprint?
Yeah, the sixteenth, a misprint.
So we're not doing anything the twenty-first?
The twenty-first, we're not?
No.
No. But she's got her eye.
Oh, that's right.
So, she's not gonna be here, so then you'd run the rest of it going with the four-person board.
What's the next day, June what?
June twentieth.
Back up in two.
June fourth?
Two thousand and twenty?
Fourth? June fourth, okay? Seven what?
Seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen, June fourth, okay? Uh, we need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to continue it on the fourth at seven fifteen.
So move by Mr. Riley, second by Mr. Perry on the fourth at seven fifteen. All those in favor?
Yeah.
June fourth, seven fifteen, we'll continue it, okay? And we'll see what happens.
Thank you for your time.
Hopefully, we'll get some, well, they're gonna be in.
Get some sleep, literally?
They're gonna be in on the seventh. So, wanna come back on the seventh and see the engineer's stuff, lighting? Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll talk about it. Um, I have to step away for me because, uh.
Ramona. How was your trip, or your vacation? Good, you guys?
I just put that under. And he's partnering with this guy, Sokos, partnering with this guy. Thank you very much to incorporate this whole way of life here. And then misses the donut shop and the four stores, trying to acquire this, and then do something like that. And then down here, the parking lot, guys, who wants to incorporate the whole thing with the zoning. What's this? Okay. No, I know. So we have the, um, revision here, our, our final approval of the, um, two fifty-three Manhattan Street, the St. Catherine's Rectory. Had a little brain cramp there. Convent, excuse me. The convent. Case number eighteen twenty-six. So, okay, thank you. Um, so it's case eighteen twenty-six, two fifty-three, the, uh, the convent. Uh, David, um, you were given approval by this board for eighteen units. And then you subsequently went to the planning board for, um, site plan and final review?
Right. Uh, again, for the record, Mr. Chairman, David Hearn Jr., four seventy Washington Street. I'm here on behalf of Manhattan Development LLC, which is the developer of the convent property at two fifty-three Manhattan Street. The board, um, about two months ago, I think, voted approval of this project for eighteen units, um, multifamily, uh, multiple eighteen units on the site. And when we left the board, um, we were headed next to the planning board for site plan review. And it was, um, agreed that we would file with this board the final plan that reflected the change in the number of units from nineteen to eighteen and, um, any other changes that were made. Um, and so what you have is the final set of plans as approved by the planning board on site plan review. And they approved that a few weeks ago. And I filed this about April second with the board. Um, so the final, the changes that are relevant, I think, to the conditions or the concerns that you had, had to do with the, um, changing of the number of units. And if you look at, um, sheet three of ten, um, the units, uh, laid out, eighteen units. And the major change on the, on the property was to eliminate, to eliminate the last unit out here, slide this back. Also, we wanted to slide this back, uh, uh, I think, well, we ended up sliding it back twenty-one feet, which was a little bit more than what we were requested to do. Uh, beyond that, uh, there have been some minor changes with respect to the width of the roadway up here just for the, satisfy the fire department's concerns. And, um, also, we moved the drainage. At one point, we were going to have drainage in this corner, uh, an underground infiltration system. A larger one here and one here. And the final plan, um, in the final plan, we eliminated the two smaller ones. And we now have the infiltration, uh, shown at sheet number five as in this large area here, underground. And so that eliminates, that was a concern of some of the folks on Railroad Ave about the one that backed up to their property. And by eliminating it and transferring the capacity to that spot there, the large spot in the middle, um, we're also giving more space out by Manhattan Street to try to preserve. Uh, in particular, there was one tree that some folks were concerned about, and we're trying to preserve that. Uh, if we'd put the infiltration system out by Manhattan Street, a small section of it, we wouldn't have been able to do that. So those were all made, the board, the planning board approved it. Um, and, uh, I'm now filing this plan with you and asking you to adopt this as the plan of record with respect to your decision, which has not yet been, uh, finalized or filed. I provided, uh, with my letter of transmittal, uh, an exhibit A which calls out each of the separate, um, uh, plan, uh, sheets and their names and the latest revision date for each. That will be important in, uh, the plan. And Ramona, did I give that to you in word form, too? Okay. I think we gave it to the planning department also. So I, I would just ask for a vote, Mr. Chairman, uh, accepting that as a plan of record.
Can I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
To accept this as the plan of record by Mary Anderson, all those, all right, do we hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Riley, all those in favor? All opposed? There you have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. When are they gonna break ground?
Um, I don't know. Uh, so now we have to come, let certain periods.
Mr. Riley.
Certain periods run, and then we'll, uh, complete the purchase.
Good, good. Thank you, David. Long night, thank you for your efforts. Thank you, Ms. Morgan. And that'll do it for the zoning board for, uh, April sixteenth. We thank you all and happy spring.
I think it'll be great.
See you next week.